Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call to order this meeting of the Bloomington City Council. It's Monday, July 22, 2024. Thank you for everybody here in the council chambers. Thanks to everybody tuning in online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any covering you might have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks for joining us tonight. Council, thanks for being here as well. Our first order of business, as always, council, is to adopt our agenda. We've got under introductory items tonight. We have item 2.1, which is the introduction of our new employees. And we've got a bunch of new employees that we're going to be meeting this evening. And item 2.2 is our 2024 Annual Update of our Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. Item 3, our consent business. Councilmember Carter has consent this evening. We have 12 items on our consent agenda tonight. Item 4, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have a total of three public hearings. One is, item 4.1, is regarding the vacation of public drainage, utility sidewalk, boulevard, and so on at Nine Mile West Second Edition. Item 4.2 is a public hearing regarding the vacation of the public utility easement over and across Lot Floor, Lot 4, Block 3, in the Far Third Edition. Item 4.3, we will have a public hearing regarding a city code amendment updating our standards for alarm systems. And item 4.4 is not a public hearing, but we will be having a discussion on the resolution regarding the ballot language related to the petition for a charter amendment change. Under our organizational business, we've got some, a number of updates on our Bloomington Forward projects. Item 5.1 will be an update on the Community Health and Wellness Center. Item 5.2 will be an update on the Bloomington Ice Garden. Item 5.3, an update on the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Project. And item 5.4 is an update on the Riverview Corridor Transit Planning progress that's been underway for some time now. Kevin Roganbuck from Ramsey County will be joining us for that. And we'll wrap up with item 5.5, as we always do, with the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Council, any questions or additions or work to be done on the agenda? If not, I will move the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda. Back to our agenda. Item 2.1 is the introduction of new employees. And we will start with Mr. Verbrugge doing an introduction in our city manager's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. It is a pleasure to introduce a new member of the leadership team here at the City of Bloomington to you. I'll invite Kathy to come up this direction. And while she's coming up, I'll filibuster a little bit here. We have new assistant city manager focused on leading our external services team. We're very fortunate to have Kathy Hadeen start with us today. As a matter of fact, it's her first day. So I'm sure that we're going to be here late into the evening, so she's getting to experience the best of the city of Bloomington on the first day. So Kathy comes to us after 23 years at Ramsey County, where she started in the Public Health Division and worked her way up through the ranks to eventually become the Director of Public Health. And after that, became Deputy County Manager. And the expanse of her services that she oversaw were about half of the county budget, over 2,000 employees. And even more importantly than that experience is what we heard about Kathy as a person. Everybody that we talked to on the reference checks and through networks and I think heard through the interviews is that she is a person of tremendous warmth. She's excellent at building relationships, and she leads with a people-first mentality. And so we're really fortunate to have her step into this critical role. A couple other bits about Kathy. I don't want to steal any comments that you may have already prepared, but she does have some family roots here in Bloomington. And not only that, she was a competitive figure skater and spent a lot of time over at BIG. So she's, she's familiar with Bloomington, and we're really excited to have her. So Kathy.
Thank you so much. It's nice to see all of you in person. I've been watching you for the past few months, getting to know the city of Bloomington. I've been watching some of you also for the past couple of months. It's really an honor to be here. I, a lifelong public servant, and as Jamie had stated, 23 years in public service. And a lot of that work, starting at the frontline level, inspecting swimming pools, all the way to standing with the governor the first day that we had a COVID case in the state of Minnesota here in Ramsey County. It's going to take a while for me to say, not say "here" and "my" and "there," and I'll get there. I'm very excited to be a part of the city of Bloomington, learning about the city and seeing what you all get to do and what everyone in the community does on a day-to-day basis. It is very clear that people love the city. It's very clear, as I got to meet people during interviews, how much people really enjoy and love working for the city. And I'm just really excited to join a team of really dedicated people. Excited to be at the city level and honestly so excited to see this much civic engagement still happening across the state, but especially here within Minnesota. You don't see that at the county level, the same that you see it at a city level. So I'm excited to step in and learn as much as I can and help make things move. So it's nice to meet all of you.
Well, it's nice to meet you. Thank you for being with us this evening and your first day. It's always like this. This is always, we always have, we always have this many. But so happy to have you onboard and looking forward to working with you and getting to know you a bit better. But thank you so very much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, we have a new employee in the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, and it's Faith here. I did, there she is.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am, oh, you can come up here. Excited to announce a new employee in the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. Arianna Williams is an amazing person, someone who I've had an opportunity to know over like the last five years through some work that we did in partnership with other cities. But he is an extraordinary community engagement facilitator, has about 15 years of racial equity practitioner experience. He is also like really engaged and has connections with lots of people. He's a family man. He'll tell you about his two nephews, I'm sure, when he introduces himself. But you don't have to take my word for it because he's standing here next to me, and I will let Arianna quickly introduce himself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate you all having me. Whew, well, this person standing next to me left huge shoes to be, I can't even say I'm filling them. But I'm going to try my best to serve this community in the best way that I know how and everywhere that I've been and all the work I've done engaging community, families, and making sure that voices of the community are brought to the table and given the credit, given the value that they are deserved. And I have a tendency to be long-winded, so I'm going to stop right now. Thank you for having me. As Faith said, I do have a family, my wife and my nephews, who are, my nephew, they are my boys, my babies. So you'll maybe have the opportunity to meet them someday. Thank you all for having me.
Well, thanks for being here, Arianna. Welcome. Glad to have you. Allison, there she is. We have a new parking wreck employee that Allison is going to introduce us to.
Mayor, council members, thanks for having us tonight. I have the privilege of introducing to you Aaron, and he is a new employee here at the city of Bloomington, but filling a role that has been vacant since May. And so I personally am very thankful he is here because this position oversees all of our youth programs. And so we are very thankful he was ready to jump in with two feet. But I'm also sure you'll see a lot of new things coming from him too, but I'll let him tell you about himself.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So really excited to be with Bloomington, have a history of working with cities, and then also a couple of the local counties and parks and recreation. And really excited to jump in Camp Cota's in its 54th year this year, and that's just an amazing dynasty and celebration. And so really excited to start some of those traditions of my own that we'll see 54 years from now still going as well.
Well, welcome aboard. And yes, you, you came in prime time for.
You got it. Diving in both feet. My, it was today my daughter signed up to volunteer right away when I started, and my son's going to camp next week, so I'm diving in both feet with my family too.
Fabulous. Well, welcome aboard. Glad you're here.
Thank you, guys.
And finally, Kim, with some new employees in community development.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We got a little behind with staff transition, introducing staff from the Community Development Department. So we're going to catch up tonight with five of our newest staff. We'll start with Megan Rustler. If you want to join, come on up. Megan joined the Building and Inspections Team as the Office Support Specialist back in April. She previously held positions with the City of Woodbury and the City of Eagan. And she comes to us with a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of Minnesota La Crosse. And after obtaining her degree, Megan served two years in the United States Peace Corps. So she's been a great addition to the team for the building group.
It's very, it's great to be here. I'm really looking forward to continuing serving for the community development and I'm thankful to Kim to be introduced.
We're very thankful that you're here with us tonight. Thanks much.
Thank you.
And next I'll introduce to you Robert Newman. Robert also joined the Building and Inspections Team recently back in June. He has over 30 years of experience in the HVAC industry and previously held positions as a project manager, estimator, and foreman. Roger is our new HVAC inspector with that team. We're excited about the type of knowledge and experience he brings to the team, and he's been a great add.
No, I just wanted to speak that everyone at the city has been so welcoming and so helpful in encouraging me and teaching me all of the culture and procedures and everything that you guys have and the immense knowledge and dedication your people have in your Building Inspections Department is top-notch. I mean, really very thoughtful, very dedicated people.
Good. That's very nice of you to say, Robert. Thank you so very much, and welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
I'm immensely grateful for the opportunity. I've been trying to get into inspections for over 10 years.
Great.
So, and always, your first job is your hardest job to get.
Good job. Thanks for being.
Thank you.
Next, I'll introduce to you Kareem Sherard. He joined the planning team back in April as a planning technician. He's a dedicated professional with a strong passion in city planning and architectural design. He's one of our design-oriented folks. He holds a bachelor's degree of environmental design from the University of Minnesota and a master's of architecture from the academic of arts, Academy of Arts, University of San Francisco. So he's a native New Yorker who brings, who has enjoyed exploring Minnesota and watching Minnesota sports teams.
Hi. Just wanted to say I've been here for three months, and I'm enjoying working for the city. I'm looking forward to a long tenure here and contributing all that I can.
Well, we're very glad to have you, and trust me, you'll get over the excited about watching Minnesota.
A lot of heartbreaks.
You'll learn. You'll learn. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, you keep forgetting, we actually, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you keep forgetting, we actually have women's sports here. They're doing quite well.
Thank you for the reminder, council member.
Okay. Next, I'll introduce Luke Spannable. He joined the Port Authority Team back in June as an Economic Development Analyst. Luke has a bachelor's degree in environmental design from the University of Colorado and a master's degree of urban and urban planning and real estate certificate from the University of Washington. Luke transitioned from Montana, where he was the housing coordinator for the city of Whitefish, and he also worked for the cities of Seattle and another city, Breckenridge in Colorado. In his free time, Luke can be found running with his dog along Minnehaw Creek or working on his model train collection, which I have not seen yet, but I've heard many people reference. So if you're into trains, talk to Luke.
Thank you, Kim, for the introduction. Really pleased to be here in front of you all. I'm sure this won't be the last time. I anticipate coming back quite a bit. Really looking forward to working with you all and serving the community.
Well, thanks for being here, Luke. And yeah, the port is doing some very important work right now. So glad to have you onboard.
Very much so.
Looking with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And finally, I'll introduce Dakota Kroll. He joined the planning team back in February. So we're a little late with this introduction, but he's, prior to coming here, Dakota was a senior planner for the city of Coon Rapids. And he recently became AICP certified and has a master's degree in urban and planning from the University of Minnesota. He enjoys exploring the region through biking along with a variety of trails in the metro.
All right. Well, Mayor and Council, good to see you all again, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the residents here in Bloomington. And I'm sure we'll have many presentations for you in the future, so.
I am sure we will. Welcome aboard. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you to our staff who did the introductions, but thank you and welcome to all of our new staff members. And all the folks here watching and everybody watching online, these folks are your city staff members. And so reach out to them, work with them, say hello to them if you run into them on the street because Bloomington City staff is among the best, if not the best, in the state of Minnesota. And we just continue the tradition as the people we bring in. So thank you much to everybody, and thanks for, everybody for doing the introductions. We'll move on to item 2.2 on our agenda. This is our 2024 Annual Update of our Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And Faith Jackson is going to be doing the update for us.
So Mayor, Council, thank you so much. I'm actually not going to be giving the update. It will be the amazing team that's going to carry this work forward that's presented here tonight. So I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
My apologies for not digging in a little bit deeper on the agenda specifics. So good evening all, welcome.
Mayor and Council, I am pleased to introduce the agenda for this evening. This isn't just any annual update. It really talks about our past, present, and future. And I want to dig a little bit back because it's important to acknowledge and understand our history. This work has actually been going on for 10 years before many of you were even elected into the city council. It started back in 2015, where you guys made a commitment to race equity work. And the city of Bloomington participated in the government for Alliance of Race Equity. Two years later, you guys embarked upon a strategic plan, and you adopted a race equity vision that read, "The city of Bloomington will act courageously to advance race equity. We will be a vibrant, safe, and healthy place where people of all races thrive." Two years later, you hired your first race equity coordinator in 2019, Ms. Faith Jackson. And I know many of you guys know this, but some of the audience may not know, today is Faith's last day. And she is Bloomington's first Chief Equity Inclusion Officer, but she won't be the last. And the work that he, she has done in these last five years has been amazing. We all know that transformative change takes time. If you're doing well, it's three years. If you're doing about average, it's five. And if you're doing not so well, it's usually about seven. And she has done amazing work to change the culture, practices, and culture of this organization to advance race equity in the city and in this community. The Race Equity Plan that was adopted included four areas, hiring, training, services, and our city services delivery, and authentic community engagement. We also created race equity action teams across the city during this time. And in 2021, the Bloomington City Council declared racism a public health crisis. We created race equity strategic planning committees, and we focus on key areas of economic stability, education, health, healthcare, neighborhood, and built environment. Race Equity not only was not just an office, in the city manager's office, it was impactful work that required all departments and divisions across the city to take accountability in advancing. And at the audience today, you have many community members and former staff leaders who have been part of this work to help advance this work and help shape that culture. So that wasn't a one-person team, or a two-person team, or a three-person team, but it was the work of all 648 employees in the city of Bloomington. In 2022, you guys invested further in the staff to build the Office of Race and Health Equity. And that's why I share that tonight's update is not only seeing what's happened in the past year and the present, you're also seeing the future in Leon, Isella, and Arianna that you have here today. And we just had a little farewell gathering before the city council meeting tonight. And Ms. Jackson actually expressed the one gift that we can all give to her is to ensure that we support this team, our organization, and the people to keep this work forward so that we can see this work happening in the next 10 years as well. So with that said, we don't have a PowerPoint, but we have a video that we're going to share that summarizes this great work that this team has built under the leadership of Ms. Jackson. And then we'll have Arianna and Isella talk about what you can expect coming the next few months here. So with that, we'll start with the video.
Welcome to the 2023-2024 Annual Council Presentation, presented by the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. The past year has been a transformative one, filled with initiatives and events that strengthen our community and promote equity and inclusion. This review kicks off where our last report ended, the summer of 2024. Last May, our inaugural Bloomin' Bloomington program launched with 10 interns in the city of Bloomington and some with corporate partners, Mall of America and Larkman-Hoffman. We celebrated their achievements last August. These interns showed provided valuable work experience and networking opportunities, setting a strong foundation for future careers. In August, we also partnered with the police racial equity action team, hosting a community barbecue that included a mini recruitment session for future officers. The event was fun and engaging and a great way to build trust and interest in law enforcement careers. Later, partnering with the cities of Edina, Bridgefield, Eden Prairie, and Eagan, we celebrated Welcome Week. As part of this celebration, we partnered with LaRiza Radio Station, the Minnesota Department of Vehicle Services, and Onido's, Minnesota to deliver a program segment on driver's licenses for all, providing crucial updates to Spanish-speaking communities. Later, we supported the Women's Employee Research Group and their leadership panel, which provided insights and inspiration for aspiring female leaders. Later, in October, we partnered with the Bloomington Chamber to recognize National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Additionally, our staff presented at the IAP2 conference. There, they shared the innovative work of the Welcome to Bloomington Design Committee. We wrapped up the year supporting the AH ERG's Passport Panel. This panel shared immigrant stories and celebrated cultural diversity. We were proud to participate in the first-ever CEI Public Sector Racial Equity Dividends Index Report. Bloomington scored high in the areas of leadership, budget, public safety, and public policy. January saw us join in partner cities for the National Day of Racial Healing Workshop. It featured renowned speakers who inspired us to continue our work towards racial equity. We also launched the Welcome to Bloomington Program. To date, we've engaged 50 new residents, many of them who are now actively participating in city activities. We continue to expand the program. Realtors are now providing welcome gifts at closing sessions containing city swag, information on local resources, and coupons to shop at local businesses. This initiative helps new residents feel welcome and connected to the community. None of this work is possible without the support of our dedicated community members. People like Elise Baldarama, who goes above and beyond by canvassing neighborhoods with flyers and bringing extra snacks to meetings and also inviting friends and family to introduce new residents. She has devoted countless hours to fostering a warm and inclusive community. In February, we supported the Love Wins Event for our newest ERG, Prism, celebrating love for all. We also supported BBN's Black History Month Pioneer and Changemakers Event, honoring those who have made significant contributions to our community. March marked the launch of our supplier diversity initiatives, ensuring our procurement processes are inclusive. We also took on new responsibilities, now handling housing discrimination complaints and partner with local agencies to provide essential resources to affected community members. We are proud to announce that in March, we successfully completed the rigorous audit by Welcome in America and met all of the core requirements to become a certified Welcome in City. This achievement underscores our unwavering commitment to creating an inclusive and welcoming environment for immigrants. The audit process was extensive, involving months of preliminary research and leading up to a three-day audit with over 20 hours of in-person interviews with staff, community members, and local organizations. Moreover, Bloomington will be the first city in the state of Minnesota to achieve this prestigious designation. We wrapped up our mental health pop-up events. These events center culturally responsive mental health practices in order to normalize and destigmatize talking with one another about individual or community mental health needs. In partnership with Edina and Bridgefield, we have engaged approximately 321 community members, normalizing and destigmatizing mental health conversations across generations. This work is facilitated by our partner, Marnita's Table. Speaking of mental health, this May, the Mental Health and Disabilities ERG hosted a successful event, bringing joy and awareness to mental health issues. And of course, what's summer without Bloom interns? This year, the program is back and better than ever, expanding the number of interns and employers. Bloom in Bloomington strives to support and grow a more diverse and accessible workforce for the community by matching young people with employers and local government, nonprofit, and private sectors. Our interns are doing impactful work. The Second Annual Juneteenth Celebration drew hundreds despite the rain. It featured giveaways, community building, face painting, and spurred significant economic development. This event, supported by grants from Blue Cross Blue Shield and in partnership with the city of Bloomington, Normandale Community College, and the Church of New Life, highlighted our commitment to celebrating cultural heritage and promoting community engagement. City Hall was bustling with activity, a testament to our vibrant community. Additionally, we've welcomed new staff. We welcomed Isella Mindiola as a full-time office support specialist. Elizabeth Tozeman recently joined as the new Assistant City Manager. And Arianna Williams is our new Equity Inclusion Program Manager. Their expertise and dedication are invaluable to our mission. In closing, the transformative work our team is doing directly impacts the city's mission of cultivating an enduring and remarkable place where people want to be. We're grateful for community support and engagement. For more information about our work, or if you're looking to get involved, please visit our website. Together, we're building a more equitable and inclusive Bloomington.
Now hand our Arianna and Isella to talk about our future work.
Wow. Talk about pathways to building community, pathways to the intersectionality between systems work and community engagement. This office has done foundational work and has exceeded the expectations of I can imagine anybody in this room. That's a testament to equity right there. That's a testament to this community trusting and building with one another. And I mean, that's just a testament to Faith Jackson, everybody. So I really, I really appreciate being able to do this work here. And speaking of that, the work that we are continuing to do this year, Isella and I are going to speak on that. So the REIT teams, the racial equity action teams. There's been a little bit of a pause, I hear. And mind you, I just got here, everybody. There's been a little bit of a pause, I hear. So we're hoping to pick that back up, revamp the equity action plans, and get those in a centralized location so that everybody can see what everyone's doing and maybe foster some ideas and collaboration.
We also want you all to save the date and come and celebrate our Bloom interns this summer. summer with the Bloom graduation happening on August 16th. If you are all able to make it, we would gladly have you all celebrate our interns with us. And then we will also be continuing the work with the Welcome to Bloomington Program, so continuing those monthly resident meetings in different Bloomington locations to welcome new residents to our community. And actually, starting today, we also have welcome gift bags for our new residents that have city swag and city information that realtors and residents can come and pick up at Civic Plaza. So we're excited to continue to see the Welcome to Bloomington Program bloom.
Additionally, we are building a training platform. We are hoping to have an RFP out to have someone develop a multi-leveled training platform, giving people an opportunity to learn and do some experiential learning in regards to equity, health equity, anti-racism, belonging, and allyship work. So more to come soon, but that's what we're working on here in this next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the update. Counsel, any questions on staff? Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Can't let the time pass away with at least having Ms. Jackson come back up for one final question.
We'll be getting to that. I won't. Trust me, we're getting to that. I just want to make sure.
Okay, because I do have a question for that.
If there are any questions regarding the presentation. Very good. Well, Faith, if you could come back up to the podium, because as Councilmember Lowman said, and it was mentioned earlier, this is Faith's last day here in Bloomington. And we did have a little gathering earlier, and it was very nice. And it was nice to hear from so many different voices about the impact that you've had on this community. And I can speak personally, the impact that you've had. I mean, we commiserated a bit about the early days, sitting basically together with nobody else in City Hall in the early days of the pandemic, and talking back and forth and going through a number of different things, and having a lot of Starburst and eating a lot of those. And the leadership that you've shown, the work that you've done with empathy and with passion and with commitment to the city of Bloomington is greatly appreciated. And the foundation that you have built, I can guarantee, I mean, your wish that we continue this work, the foundation that you have built is going to add, is going to make that much easier, because it is such a strong foundation, and it gives us something to stand on as we move forward. So thank you. Thank you for your work. We're going to miss you. Good for you, bad for us, but we're going to miss you and excited about your next step and the work that you're going to be doing. Councilmember Lowman?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I couldn't say it any better. So I'm not going to, I just had one question for her, really. And just before I kind of move to that, Mayor, I also want to thank you really for your leadership around this particular issue and also the manager. You know, when we were doing this, it wasn't a real popular thing to kind of do this. And so I'm just, I'm happy to be a part of this team that has been willing to take challenges and kind of lean into where we need to go as a city, and I appreciate that, and that's difficult to do. So with that being said, I can't get away with asking you one last ridiculous question that I always like to ask you. So what advice would you give our council or the community abroad as you kind of move on to your next stage? Any advice that you can give us?
Mayor Bussie, council members, I wasn't expecting that one. But in true Faith fashion, I will pull an answer together. My advice that I'm going to give to the council, I think, will be the same request that I had of the partners and community earlier today, which is to really wrap your arms around the staff who are leading this work. It's challenging work, and it's become ever the more challenging. And so that support is critical and is necessary. And sometimes that just means showing up for events. Sometimes that means creating policies and being intentional and commitment to things and standing up for things in that way. But whatever you can do to show up for and support the staff and the community members who are engaged in this work, that would be my advice for this council, to think about what sort of personal commitment do you want to make? And then hold yourself accountable to that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So you know I couldn't not say something. So I just wanted to say thank you, Faith, for your leadership. I'm not going to repeat what you said, Mayor, but I do reflect on your first couple of years here with the pandemic and the murder of George Floyd. And honestly, I've never seen a city employee have to endure so much. You are one of the most persistent and resilient people that I have had the pleasure to meet and to get to work with, and I'm really, truly thankful for everything that you've given Bloomington. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel?
I'll echo my thanks. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, of course, I'd love to. I hope this isn't the last time I get to sing your praises in one way or another, but on behalf of all of us here, I want to absolutely thank you for the work that you do. I've always said that the Office of Racial Equity Inclusion and Belonging is about racial equity, yes, but it's also about inclusion and belonging. And that means that there are other minority communities, other marginalized communities that get the benefit. It truly is a rising tide lifts all boats kind of situation if we work hard and we have that joint collaborative point of view. And so as a member of the LGBTQ community, I have benefited from your leadership, even though you might have had a lens from your, you know, lived experience in intersectionality. I appreciate that so much, and I've learned a ton from you and the work that you do, and I'm excited about the future of the programming that we have. And I will continue to show up and keep my mouth shut, but be a presence, I promise, when I can, to all that work. So I'm pleased to make that commitment to you in front of everybody. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Faith, for frankly helping me with an issue that I wasn't all that familiar with when I first started and when you first started. Very much appreciated. One of the things that I reflect back on was what you consistently told us is that the long-term goal is that we don't need to have a job like yours, and we're not there yet. And so I'm glad we have new leadership stepping up. I'm super happy at the position you've put this community in, where we're able to draw in more people, more voices into our conversations, into our decision-making. It's making the community better, and you've made the community better. So thank you for that.
Well said. Councilmember? Councilmember Muah?
All right, well, if everyone's going, I'll go too. I think the first time I met you, Faith, I wasn't on council yet. I think it was during, I can't remember what it was. But all of a sudden, you stepped up and you were the soft-spoken person. I'm like, who is this lady? And what is she kind of leading? And through the work that you've done, you're more than just your soft-spoken voice. The work that you've done speaks loudly to the values that Bloomington has. And I think you've moved us tremendously forward in making sure that people who come to Bloomington feel welcome and feel like they belong here. And so thank you for everything you do, for everything you're going to do, and we're excited to see another great Bloomington staff go on and do other great things for the state. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowman.
Councilmember Rivas? Where's that?
I don't have much to say except to thank you for the effort that you have put into your job. Like I said, I just started, so having experienced everything that everybody has, but I just thank you from my heart for all the effort that you put into what you were trying to create, and you created in the process. Again, thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I said most of my piece earlier, but there's another voice that couldn't be here tonight, and that was Faith's previous supervisor before Elizabeth was the Assistant City Manager. Mike Sable was the Assistant City Manager, and he has his own council meeting, City Manager in Maplewood now. Happy for Mike, but he sent this along, so you're going to have, just imagine me being Mike.
Mike. Okay.
That is, Faith, we couldn't be more opposite in appearance, and we couldn't be more aligned in how we approach the work. You'll be great in any role, and I'm so happy for you. Congratulations. So that's another voice to add in. Last thing I'll say, Mayor, just to amplify and compliment what all of you have said, because I think it's important for the community here. Folks were with us earlier tonight. They heard it, but they also know it because they're in relationship with Faith. They've been able to see firsthand the work that she does. I think it's important for the community that maybe doesn't always see her at work or see maybe the product of that work. It's a tremendous thing for the organization and for the community when you can point to somebody and say, that person was transformational. And so in the five years that Faith has been here, for the work that she has done from where we were back in 2019 to where we are today, it truly is a transformation, and we're really fortunate to be able to benefit from your work.
Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Verbrugge. We'll start the clock, yes.
30 seconds. Well, okay, I just want to acknowledge that I did meet my 15-minute timeframe, so I need my gift card. But I would be remiss if I didn't go on record and just reiterate the thank yous that I gave earlier. So I want to thank the council for their support of this work over the last five years, and thank you to Jamie and others who were here at the time for creating the position and making that a part of the executive leadership team. Thank you to the fellow members of the executive leadership team for all the work that you've done and support that you've provided. This work would not be possible with just me alone. And so the things that you've done are really sort of made this possible. And a special thank you to two members of that team, Carl and Erica, for not only supporting the work, but for supporting me personally. I wouldn't be here standing here without that, so I just want to shout that out. And then perhaps most importantly, if there is a most importantly in here, the people who've done the work. So Padal, I think, is here somewhere. Padal, you know how I feel about you. Thank you so much for the incredible work that you did coming in to help build the office. And Isella, yeah, you deserve a huge thank you for not only doing the work, but helping to manage me, which can be a challenge. And so thank you for that. And then Arian for what you're doing, and Elizabeth for coming in and really supporting the staff. I appreciate the way that you are supporting the staff, and I'm proud of where we are and excited to see where we'll go. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Best of luck, and I look forward to our pass crossing again. Very good.
Now we're all going to have to leave.
We will move on, counsel, to item three on our agenda, our consent business. Councilmember Carter has tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'm not feeling as emotional now, so I'm good. But I've had two holds, so 3.9 from Councilmember Lowman, and then 3.11 from Councilmember DeLisandro. Are there any other holds? 3.2 from Councilmember Rivas? Just kidding. 3-1? Okay. All right, any other holds? Okay, so with that, I would move to approve items 3.3 to 3.8, 3.10, and 3.12.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, seconded by Councilmember, who was it? Councilmember Muah to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Now, we've had four holds, and in 3.1, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I held this one because I believe that it's actually a very good document. I just don't believe that it goes far enough. I said this when we were reviewing it. I think it's an opportunity to take a look at our sponsorship policy and how we can really drive revenue for the city, how we can put together a package. You know, I think that the current document says if corporations or businesses want to sponsor things, they can negotiate something. I think that's good. I think those opportunities are there. I think we can be more deliberate about it, particularly given the scale of some of the projects that are coming forward. So for that reason, I just wanted to make that note. And so overall, I think the rest of the policy is great. I just think more work needs to be done to actually get there. So for that reason, I'll actually oppose it, but I think the document itself, what's in there is good. I just think it should go farther.
Understand, Councilmember Nelson, and you've been consistent with your comments over the past couple of years about this, and appreciate it. And I think message received. I know the park staff that I've talked to on this, they understand your desires and your goals on this and are trying to balance that, I think, with the reality of trying to make sure it actually does happen, so.
Yeah, and I actually appreciate that. I do believe that they're working and looking at those opportunities and trying to find a way. They just weren't ready for it right here. So I'm trying to dismiss the work that they, the good work they did.
All right. So Councilmember Carter, if you could move that, please?
I would move to approve the City of Bloomington Park and Park Facility naming and sponsorship policy.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, seconded by Councilmember DeLisandro to accept item 3.1 as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-1, with Councilmember Nelson in opposition. Item 3.2, Councilmember Rivas. Microphone, please.
I'd like to get more information on regards to that. I work with medical files at work, and I just don't understand how this is going to happen between the police department and Alina, directly giving the medical information to patients, to the police. I just need to get more information on regards to that, because I have no idea existence of HIPAA that prohibits any of sharing of medical files to anyone, including the police department. So I just want to get more information on what the document that is currently sitting at the police department, if it's available to us to look at.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Deputy City Attorney Peter Zuniga, is he with us? Yeah, he's with us. He can address too. But most importantly, this isn't about sending medical information. It has to do with the interface of our CAD system, our computer-aided dispatch, between dispatch here and Alina. So it really is more about data sharing technologically. So Peter, I don't know if you want to address any more than that.
Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, City Manager Verbrugge is correct. It's about connecting our CAD systems so that the police department, when they receive a call for medical services, they don't have to actually physically pick up the phone and call Alina for services so that the two systems can connect to each other. And so Alina is requiring us to enter into this agreement so that the security requirements and HIPAA are maintained.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I just had that question. I wanted clarification on that.
Understood, and we'll have either Mr. Zuniga or the chief follow up with you if you need any more information or have more details. Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Rivas, would you then be amenable to moving item 3.2?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivas has moved approval of the Alina Business Associate Agreement. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rivas, seconded by Councilmember Carter on item 3.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Item 3.9, Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 3.9 is in relationship to a budget resolution regarding ARPA allocations. And since these dollars have to do with Treasury Department, I've been advised to abstain from casting a vote with regard to this, out of an abundance of caution regarding any perception dealing with, I work with the Federal Reserve Bank and the Treasury Department. So with that being said, I just wanted to step out of this vote.
Thank you for the heads up on that, Councilmember Lowman. Item 3.9, Councilmember Carter.
I move to approve a resolution making alterations to the approved budget, transferring $979,257.20 from the 4350 Small Business Center Capital Fund back to the 2550 Federal Relief Grants Fund.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, seconded by Councilmember Rivas to accept item 3.9 on our consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, and abstaining.
Aye.
Item 3.9 passes 6-0 with Councilmember Lowman abstaining on this item. And finally, item 3.11, Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually just had a question about this one. I thought that we had changed the license structure for Nine Mile Brewing so that we did not have to do this anymore, that there was an extension of their license boundary, if you will, that was done before our former license clerk left. And it seems like that's not the case, so I'm just kind of curious. I have no problem approving this tonight. That's not the issue. It's just a question of why we're doing this. I thought we fixed this.
Clarification, yeah. Clarification, yeah. It's ringing a bell as well and I'm wondering, Mr. Verugui, anything? Shed light here.
Our acting city clerk, Jamie Hansen, is here. I'm going to have Jamie come up and address the question and I think that our planning manager, Glenn Markagard, is too, if there's maybe something that Glenn can.
So I have Matt that is working on our licensing right now. I am not aware of that, but I can certainly look into that and get back to you just because I'm relatively new to the position. But I will find that out and get back to you and see what we look up, what we've done in the past and if we need to work on that to not have that happen in the future.
So Councilmember, you said you're not opposed to it. You just want a little clarification.
Exactly. Yeah, I thought that we had done the work to expand that boundary so that they didn't need to come back to us every time they wanted to do something outside. That's all. And if we could fix it, that'd be great. If we didn't do it, that's fine too.
It's ringing a bell. I'm not sure what the boundaries were, but yeah, we'll get information back to you on that.
Okay, very good.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember De Lysandro, understanding how involved the owner of Nine Mile has been in, you know, involved in this process, I'm guessing that if that were the case, he would probably have thrown a flag during the process here. So let me just, we'll do some homework. If council approves this, we'll do some homework and we'll report back to you and just let you know what.
That's totally fine. Yeah, I just, it's interesting to me and so I wanted to inquire, but it's not going to prevent me from passing this or proposing this. So I will move to approve the amendment to the on sale liquor license for Bloomington Brewer and Tap Room LLC doing businesses, Nine Mile Creek Brewing Company for events on August 10 and September 21, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember De Lysandro, second by Councilmember Carter on this. We have a question. Councilmember Nelson.
I have a very quick comment that I recall a discussion. I don't know if we actually changed anything and/or just asked the question if we could change it, so I would just re-ask the question if that was the case and see if there's a way we can.
We'll get some clarification on this. Yep. So we have a motion and a second on the table regarding item 3.11 as stated on the consent business tonight. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Carter, for leading us in the consent agenda this evening. We will move on to item 4.4, or 4.1 on our agenda. This is part of our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We will start with a public hearing regarding the vacation of public drainage, utility sidewalk, boulevard, floodage, and maintenance easements over and across Lot 1, Block 1, Nine Mile West 2nd Edition, Hennepin County. Ms. Long, our city engineer is here. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You presented the item pretty well. For those of you who don't speak Platts and want to know where that actually is, it's up on West 78th Street and it will be, the vacation will be held until the plat is actually recorded, so when the Nine Mile West 4th Edition is recorded, that's when it all magically happens seamlessly.
I apologize for stealing your thunder.
That's all right. Anytime.
I won't on the next one, I promise, so. Counsel, any questions of Ms. Long on this? No questions? All right, I will open. This is a public hearing. I will open this public hearing on item 4.1, a public hearing regarding Lot 1, Block 1, Nine Mile West 2nd Edition here in Hennepin County. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
Our bussy, there's no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody here in the chambers? Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember De Lysandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion on this, anything? This is pretty straightforward stuff. If not, I would look for action. Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt an ordinance approving the vacation of public drainage, utility sidewalks, boulevard, floodage, and maintenance easement over and across lots 1, Block 1, Nine Mile West 2nd Edition, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember De Lysandro to accept item 4.1 on our agenda tonight. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Next up, item 4.2. Ms. Long, we're back for a public hearing. This is regarding the vacation of a public utility easement.
Correct. On Lot 4, Block 3, FAR 3rd Edition, also known as 9030 Park Avenue, for those of you who don't speak Platt. And it will be recorded by the HRA as Bloomington 45th Edition and again will be simultaneous.
Very good. Counsel, any questions on this? Councilmember De Lysandro.
Just a clarification. This is the next step in the process of splitting that lot, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing on item 4.2, the public hearing regarding the vacation of a public utility easement over and across Lot 4, Block 3, FAR 3rd Edition. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
There's no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers. Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2. Motion by Councilmember De Lysandro, second by Councilmember Rivas to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Anything to add on this, counsel? Any questions? Councilmember De Lysandro.
I will move to adopt an ordinance approving the vacation of public utility easement over and across Lot 4, Block 3, FAR 3rd Edition, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Motion by Councilmember De Lysandro, second by Councilmember Muah to accept item 4.2 on our agenda this evening. No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Our third and final public hearing of the evening, this is regarding a city code amendment updating our standards for alarm systems. And Lorraine Draper, I believe, is here. I was told that, there's Lorraine, there she is. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. As part of the review process for the deployment of a new false alarm management system, staff in the police department determined that the related ordinance was outdated and in need of updating. Changes are proposed to reduce the complexity of penalties and to eliminate documentation that hasn't effectively deterred repeat false alarm instances. Penalties were also adjusted to more accurately reflect the program costs.
Very good. Counsel, any questions regarding this? And I know that I saw on this Chief Hodges was also part of putting all this together and so well on board with the police department and everybody is on board and.
Yes.
Everything's good. Very good.
Yes, in agreement.
No counsel questions?
Okay.
Very good, thank you. As I mentioned, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on item 4.3, city code amendments regarding updating standards for alarm systems. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on item 4.3 this evening? Is there anyone on the phone?
Our bussy, there's no one on the phone.
And is there anybody, last chance here in the chambers? Counsel, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.3. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember De Lysandro to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further discussion on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Counsel, any questions on this? Need additional information? Councilmember Lohman.
Oh, Mayor, just, the only thing I wanted to say just briefly is I was just, I was amazed at how much staff time from the police department was spent on this. It was shocking to me to see that number. So, you know, hats off to the city staff for making that movement to try to kind of get those numbers down.
Agreed, agreed, Councilmember. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember De Lysandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate staff's effort to reduce the number of calls. As a small business owner, I know the flip side of this also is response time to an actual situation. And when there's this many false calls, there is a perception that this is probably just another false call. And that leads to adverse outcomes for businesses when there is actually a thing. I'm not saying that the police don't respond as quickly as they can, not calling them out for that. I just understand that if they're spending their time going places and not going to where there's actually a real situation, that's not good for anybody in our community. So I appreciate staff's effort to make sure that our officers are focused on where their best, time is best spent.
Thank you for that perspective, Councilmember Nelson. Greatly appreciated. Councilmember De Lysandro.
I just had a brief question about the enforcement of this. Is that done by the chief's office or is that done by our compliance office or how's that work actually? Like if we're going to fine people, how does that actually work?
Mr. Verugui.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the, I think the fine would end up being administered not through police but through the city clerk's office and the legal office. Is that correct? City attorney?
Yep. Yeah. City attorneys checking really quick here and we'll stand by.
Doesn't run through, doesn't, yeah, it doesn't run through the compliance office of legal. It's the city clerk for the business licensing and the.
Right on, okay. Yep, thank you. That's all I was, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a quick follow-up question to Councilmember De Lysandro's. We're in a better position to enforce these now. I think it was like three or four years ago now, but we wrote off some of these and that's been cleaned up, right? That's my understanding when we had that meeting, so we'll actually get this money.
Mr. Verugui.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I'm being optimistic in saying I hope we don't actually have to collect any money, right? Because what ultimately is sort of our philosophy around here is we strive for compliance, right? And so we don't want to feed people or fine people and be overly burdensome in that regard. So one of the things that happens here is, I understand it from the police department, is that many of the businesses have a service that is managing these alarms, right? And so the protocol is that typically the service is supposed to call and verify an alarm and many of them are just skipping through that and just sending it right to dispatch, right? So, you know, part of what we're trying to do is get better compliance from the vendors who are providing services to business because ultimately businesses end up beating that cost, right? And it's not necessarily for anything they've done or not done, so.
Thank you for that. Additional questions? If not, counsel, I'd look for action on item 4.3.
Happy to do that.
Councilmember De Lysandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moving to adopt an ordinance updating the standards for alarm systems, including updated fees and penalties and miscellaneous updates for clarity, thereby amending Chapter 14 and Appendix A of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember De Lysandro, second by Councilmember Lohman to accept item 4.3 as stated. No further council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember De Lysandro, summary publication.
I move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of whatever we just passed. I guess, I don't know, it doesn't have a number. Sorry about that.
Motion by Councilmember De Lysandro, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication on item 4.3. No further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much and thanks to staff for bringing those items forward for our public hearings. Our final item under item 4 is 4.4. It's a resolution regarding the ballot language related to the petition for a charter amendment and I think that's why a majority of the folks are here with us this evening. So we're glad you stuck with us. Ms. Manderscheid, if you could frame this up and lead us through this discussion, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor and members. The PowerPoint presentation. While we're getting organized, the team that worked on this, in addition to Peter Zuniga in legal, Jamie Hansen in the clerk's office, and Janine Hill in our communications department as well as multiple staff members in the city manager's office. So thank you to them for their feedback and perspectives during the process. At a very high level, I think we'll start and go through the PowerPoint presentation and then tee up some options for your consideration as we go through it. I appreciate that some of this might be repetitive for some in the room because we want to have a cumulative build from the entire process so everybody understands what's happening, but there is not too much duplication. So with that, second slide. So here is an overview of the process and want folks to see that we are in the final stages of it. The second to last part of the process was done during 3.3 of the consent agenda tonight. And so now that the clerk has certified the sufficiency, the council has adopted a resolution consistent with that. The next and near final step is the consideration of the ballot language and setting that ballot language. Next slide. So the timing of that is important. We have it here for your consideration tonight. The actual ballot language is not due to the county until the 13th of August, so should the city council choose not to adopt ballot language tonight, they could give direction to staff and we could bring it back at the next regular meeting on August 5th. Next slide. Thought it would be helpful for the council to see an excerpt of the petition. It's many, many pages long and it's, I mean, many, many inches tall worth of pages of signatures and they all look the same other than the signatures and here is the top of it with the purpose statement as well as the title. The purpose statement being that the purpose of this petition is to repeal ranked choice voting in the City of Bloomington and restore free and fair elections to their prior form. Text of the proposed amendment is on this next slide. So there are three parts to the charter amendment that is before you for your consideration. The, it is amending four, excuse me, three sections of the city charter. I have a side-by-side on the next slide. So the first section is 4.2 and this was removed in a prior year and it is sought for reinsertion into the city charter. Section 4.2, essentially what this does is restore the primary election process in the election process as a whole. The second part is 4.04, the filing of candidates. There were several changes, as you can see, in the legislative history that follows the language of 4.4 in the current charter on the left-hand side. There, what we ultimately have in our charter currently is a referral, so to speak, of what is in state law in that that we would follow the dates and requirements of uniform election law. Those dates could change and our code previously had very specific numbers in it and we wanted to be clear that we would be following uniform election law timing requirements. What the charter amendment seeks to do is to put back in place language that was previously in the city charter with specific dates. Section 4.07 is, in our current charter, the ranked choice voting description in that we are going to be operating the election of mayor and city council members using ranked choice voting. And 4.07 in the proposed charter amendment authorizes the city council to adopt regulations consistent with the process that's on the books, so to speak. So it would, if, what they're proposing here in 4.07 is essentially that we would need to go back to the city code and we would have a series of city code amendments to put back in place a lot of the language that was there previously that was edited when we enacted a ranked choice voting. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the action before you tonight is setting the ballot language and I wanted to highlight the considerations that went into that process. We have set many, several ballot questions during my time here at the City of Bloomington and it has often been a conversation on the council where we have discussed the words, the literal words. Similarly, at the Charter Commission, we have a very compressed timeframe tonight, or excuse me, during this particular year and we have two meetings, two regular meetings to ultimately set this ballot language. What is proposed to you tonight took into consideration a variety of things that the internal staff team concluded were important. Specifically, they are listed here. You have heard me say this before, for those of you that have been on the council setting ballot language, we seek to set language that scores at a grade level between eight and 12. Options A and B in the packet are at grade eight. The language, we had our coed department pull the statistic out, the language that is a language other than English is spoken in 18.5% of the homes in the City of Bloomington. And so we think that that is important to make sure that everyone understands what And so we think that that is important to make sure that everyone understands what they're voting on. Similarly, we want to be sure that we can help the election judges as much as possible so that they're not being asked a lot of questions that they're in, kind of in a difficult position to respond to in a substantive way. We also looked at the purpose statement of the petition, which I covered earlier in the slides. Free and fair are, I don't want to quote it directly. You had it on a previous slide. We can go back to it if you'd like. So we wanted to honor that. That is also a requirement of the law. And then there are two different sections in the law that are required. One of them is in Minnesota statutes 41012. Specifically, that's, that states two requirements that's relevant for you tonight. One of them is that you are the entity that sets the language of the ballot question. The governing body here, the city council. And the second one is that the statement of the question on the ballot shall be sufficient to identify the amendment clearly and to distinguish the question from every other question on the ballot at the same time. So, in my, just to be clear to you all, this particular ballot will only have majority voting on it. It does not have any, as far as we know at this point, I don't anticipate any changes from now until then, having a city council or mayor election on the ballot. So the only type of voting that will be on the ballot is majority voting. There will be no ranked choice voting on the, on the actual ballot. The other thing to note is that ballot questions appear in a very specific format. The font, the type size, a lot of very specific requirements in Minnesota rules about how that question appears. So it will appear in a shaded box. It says city question number one. And then the language that you all set tonight will follow that. So it will be very clear that it's a city question, that it is not, you know, a judicial election or something like that. Which leads me into a discussion about Minnesota rules. It contains lots of very specific requirements related to the form of the ballot. The two that are most relevant here tonight are that the title of the ballot question can have no more than 10 words. I know that we've talked about this before on previous ballot questions. And it must, that title must be approved by legal counsel, specifically the city attorney's office. And then it has to be a yes/no question. And so that is the highlight. Let's go to the, the next slide. So I, there are two options in your packet and as I mentioned, an internal staff team put these together. These both again are rated, and when I say rated, we're using the grade level statistics that are available in the Microsoft Word software. So you could run an analytic and it gives you a data statistic. And so both of these are in the grade eight level. And we made, I mean, everyone obviously certainly has opinions about, you know, as you all have, that have been a part of these conversations about what are the best words? And we spent a great deal of time discussing that and I'm sure we will again tonight. But we thought we would focus on the functional, what is functionally happening as a result of the question that's being asked. And we were very careful about the words that were being used. So for example, if we use the word repeal, it bumps up the score on the readability, or excuse me, the grade level. So we, you'll see here that we use the word stop and continue. So that's just one example. The other thing that we were mindful of is the point I made earlier about that there might be some voters that don't know what ranked choice voting is and will not see it on this ballot. So we wanted to be mindful and that's why you see the explanation phrasing about a yes vote means, a no vote means, and in an effort to try and explain that. The other thing to note, for those of you that may not remember, we will and anticipate having, once you all set the ballot language, frequently ask questions, an information sheet on the city website that will explain in greater detail what is occurring. And that will be available on the city website and, you know, available at the clerk's desk and that sort of thing. So, the last thing on the next slide that I want to discuss, or actually, there's two more slides that I want to discuss. And there were a lot of question, a lot of feedback from the, from, via email that was submitted to the city. And there, and I, I wanted to provide that to you. I know it's also been provided in the republished packet. That is the question text that is here on the left-hand side. And I attempted to craft a sort of an option C that does not appear in a resolution in your packet. But it is a, an effort on my part this afternoon to, or today, rather, to come up with a bit of a compromise for you to perhaps consider. And then the last, the next thing on the next slide that I want to just make sure that everybody has had a chance to see is there were a lot of references to the Minnetoka ballot from last year that were related to ranked choice voting. And so I thought it would be helpful for the council to have that question in front of you. This is the exact question from the secretary of state's office that was on the Minnetoka ballot last year, as well as the petition, page one excerpt, similar to what was provided to you on an earlier slide. Just so you have a comparison there. So I know that's a lot of information and we're going to have a very specific conversation about words. But I'd be happy to go into more detail, but I thought I'd offer that as a high-level overview for you.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Council questions from Ms. Manderscheid. Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Lohman?
Just curious, mayor and city attorney, with the Minnetoka one that we're looking at right now, what's the grade level on that one? Did you guys test that out? I was trying to take it and email it to myself and try to do the same exercise. I was just curious what it is as is.
Mayor members, I believe it was in 15. I can double-check that while we're sitting here, but I believe I ran it on, it was 15, yeah, last Friday.
And ours is, is eight right now. And then the one that you suggested as a compromise, what's that at?
9.7.
Okay, so just a bit above what we've got right now. Thanks, that's what I've got, mayor.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, mayor. Building on that question, when you are talking about readability, is that readability or reading and comprehension?
Mayor and members, that is the grade level. There's a, I can come up with the exact name of the grade score, that's, the grade test, rather, that's used by the Microsoft Word program, but it is not readability or comprehension. It's the specific grade. We don't have an internal standard that I'm aware of with regard to our goal for readability or comprehension. We have used grade level as, as a proxy in my years here at the council, or excuse me, at the city. And so I thought it would be helpful to provide that statistic.
Okay. And then to your knowledge, did Minnetoka have any issues with their language? Did they get a lot of questions? Did they? Because my understanding is that for Minnetoka, when they had the, when they had the public weigh in, both sides agreed to the language and so it's kind of a nice compromise. And I guess I'm just curious if they, there were just any kind of major issues when people were completing the ballot?
Yeah, absolutely. I did reach out to Minnetoka and asked about their experience. The question that was proposed, put forward, rather, originally by the city attorney's office in that matter, or excuse me, in the resolution likely, was not the ultimate question that was adopted. It was a question that was similar to, as described to me, the question that was very similar to the one that was originally used to put ranked choice voting in place. And so that was used as the question that was put forward for discussion. What was ultimately adopted is language that grew out of the discussion at the city council level. It is also my understanding that the grade level analysis did not come up in the conversation and has not been, something that has been a part of the review process in Minnetoka historically. The other thing is that it was communicated to me that both sides, I don't necessarily want to say both sides, but it is a yes and no question. So the, the two most interested parties in the Minnetoka ballot question discussion were both interested in having repeal ranked choice voting as a, as a, as a phrase in the question in that ultimately, as you see, is reflected in their question, or its question.
So I guess what I was really trying to get at is did they have any issues? Like on voting day when people were voting? Because I think part of the readability consideration is to avoid confusion or the election judges getting lots of questions. And so did Minnetoka experience that with the way that their language is worded or was worded?
Mayor members, I did not ask that question about whether they had issues on election day.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, council? Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, this is probably more so a question for, maybe for you or, there's a number of emails that were out there in terms of kind of the scope of what we can do tonight with regards to this question. On there are some folks that had written that we should vote this down this evening. And I wanted to just make sure that we had the scope of what this is. That we're, we're not as a, as a council, you know, making a decision on whether or not we, we want to have ranked choice voting or not this evening. My understanding is that we've got a petition that has come before the charter commission and has gone through the proper steps and come, and been certified internally by staff in our city clerk's office. And then to the council and then here tonight to, to work through the language. And then this would go essentially then, after we get this either tonight or some other night, would go on to the next step to eventually hit the, you know, hit it so we could vote on it. But, you know, in terms of our scope and what we can do, I wanted to just, let me let you kind of clarify that if you would.
I appreciate that, councilmember. The, the question regarding ranked choice voting will be on the ballot this fall. It will be on the ballot in November and/or earlier, I guess, if you vote early in, in the city. And our role is to, because a group submitted a petition that was necessary. It passed all the muster in the petition. It was moved forward by the charter commission. What we're simply doing either tonight or at the very latest at our August 5th meeting is determining what language will be on that ballot. So there's, there's no up or down for us. We're not, we can't say, no, we don't want to put this on the ballot. That is not an option for us. It will be on the ballot. It's just a matter of how we want to phrase it. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that forward. Council, additional questions? Well, council, I think our discussion tonight was framed up very nicely. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid, for, for putting it all together to try and figure out how best to present this to voters in a way that they can understand, that is clear and that can, that we can get to an answer on this question one way or another. And I will say, I, I agree, councilmember Carter, the statement you made, I mean, toward, or the, what you were implying, that the work that they did in Minnetoka, obviously, that, that language seemed to work, correct? I mean, they didn't have any major issues. They did come to a decision in Minnetoka to continue ranked choice voting. But at the same time, I do like the work that has been done here just because I like the notion of simplifying and as a, as an, you know, unrepentant editor to take out as many words as possible. And the notion of questioning, you know, should we, should we change the city charter? I think the vast majority of voters don't care if we change the city charter. What they want to know is whether we should continue ranked choice voting or not. And so to continue, you know, to make it as simple as possible in that way. To make it a very simple yes or no question. I mean, we look at our two options here. It's just the, do you want the positive or the negative look at things here? You know, should we continue? Yes or no? Or should we stop? Yes or no? And it's, what do you think is the best way to, to phrase it in terms of getting people to understand what we're trying to, to say without, without having the question itself influence the voters and what the voter might think? And I do like in, in either of these two options as well that the explanation that we can put on the ballot puts it pretty clearly. You know, a yes vote means you want to continue using ranked choice voting. A no vote means you want to use majority voting and stop using ranked choice voting. It's, it's laid out there pretty simple. And I, as I said, I, I think the fewer words, the better to try and simplify this. I think to, to make this as accessible to as many people as possible to hear that 18% of our voters don't have English spoken as their first language in their household. I think to make it as, as simple as possible makes a lot of sense to make this accessible to everyone. And I think just to, to get it on the ballot in a straightforward way and come to a resolution on this, I think makes a lot of sense. Thoughts on that? Councilmember Lohman?
Oh, mayor, I couldn't have said it better myself. I, I too like the Minnetoka language. And then I keep looking at the demographical differences. But, you know, if you've got to translate, translate this and our, you know, we've got our demographics difference. Yeah, I, you know, just if I had to go with one, I'll go with A. You know, do you want to continue what we're doing now or do you want to stop it? I think that, that A for me works. So I, I can't say any more eloquently than that.
Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Muah. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm of a different mind and that is that I, I think that it's important that we acknowledge the, that, you know, the voting public has put their name on a ballot measure. And that ballot measure that they signed specifically had language that said, do you want to repeal this and return it to its prior form? And I think it would do a bit of a disservice to the spirit of the, the petition to not acknowledge that that's the question on the table. And so I'm not against simplifying it, but to me, there's a couple of key words in that language that I think are important. One is, it is a repeal. We passed something. We're repealing it. Now, that word's hard. I understand that. But the people that signed this, we haven't, we've, we've validated the ballot or the, the petition as valid. We didn't ask them if they understood what that word meant. We accepted it. And so I feel like we should accept the language here the same, just to be consistent about it, really. I mean, it's just in honoring the petitioners, in my opinion. So this, that's one thing I'd say. So that word is important to me. And then the other word that's important to me is that, that, where it happens. So, and, and that could be in that explanation, but to your point is, you know, if we repeal it, here are the things that have to change. The words that we agreed to in the charter amendment now need to be changed back to the things that there were. So prior form, in my opinion, kind of sort of needs to be defined. So to me, that, that would make it really clear and we could do that in the explanation portion of it. I, I understand the point of like clarification on the question. In the explanation, you could say like, this means that these sections of the, of the charter are going to go back to these, you know, what it was before we agreed to this in 2020. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I also think that, and maybe, so if you're, you know, making me choose, I would, I would say that proponents of this repeal should be given the opportunity to vote yes. As, so I would pick B over A to councilmember Lohman's point because the people, the people who are proponents of this repeal would then get to vote yes, I want to stop. I want to repeal. So I think the yes question should be for the action that the, the petition has requested. Simply because that's the reason we're here having this conversation in the first place. So those are my two cents on that and we could talk about the specifics of the language.
And, and thank you. I appreciate that, councilmember. And let me ask you if your second point, about the machinations about changing the charter and so on. Obviously, there's going to be, as Ms. Manderscheid said, there's going to be a Q and A. There's going to be, there's going to be a public information component to all of this, both by the city trying to explain it all and by the different colored shirts that we see out here tonight, trying to explain it from their perspective. And so, in your mind, is that, is that public information, that public education process adequate to explain, as we, as I said, as we get into the machinations of changing the charter, which I don't know that people necessarily, you know, they, they look at a yes or no question based on whether or not it's going to change the charter or not.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Mr. Mayor. But I, the way I would say it is, there's a reason it had to go on the ballot. And the reason it has to be on the ballot is because it's a charter amendment change, not any other kind of like ordinance or law that we pass up here at council. And so as it is a referendum for the charter of the, of the city, I think it's worth acknowledging that. That would be my take on that. And maybe it's not the specifics. You don't have to get into a lot of detail. But there's a reason it's got to go on the ballot and that is that because it is a charter amendment changes and charter amendment changes go on ballots. And that, I think that's important to acknowledge.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, mayor. As I was reading through this, the, the big thing that kind of got me tripped up was in the explanation when we talked about reinstating majority voting. Because it's not, to me, common vernacular that we use, right? Either we're talking about ranked choice voting or we're talking about primaries and general elections. We're not really talking about majority voting. So I Googled, what is majority voting? And it sounds just like ranked choice voting. Or it sounds just like, you know, everything else we do for voting. And so I think that piece to me needs to be absolutely clear about, okay, we have ranked choice voting. If we stop doing this, what is the alternative? And that means primaries and a general election. And I think that to me reduces a lot of the confusion, especially, I mean, you're right. We're going to do a lot of public outreach and information from all the groups here from the city itself. But having been through an election, there's still a lot of people who don't get the message, who don't receive the information or the flyer from everyone else. And so when it comes down to the actual knowledge and making a decision, it comes at the voting booth. And I think having that clarity to understand that you're deciding between ranked choice voting and then a primary and a general is vitally important to make sure that we're covering everyone who will be voting this fall.
That's a good point. Councilmember Muah. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, mayor. So I absolutely agree with councilmember Muah. I did the exact same thing. I was like, well, what is the definition of majority? We don't ever use that language. And so agree that it should be more clear with the use of a primary and a general election. And I believe that that was also language in the petition or in the description, the more kind of detailed description. Can you go back to option C? So I do like in option C that the title or the purpose statement, or I guess title, I'll just call it title, says clearly, this is a Charter Amendment. And then I think it should be very clearly stated repeal ranked choice voting. And then in the descriptor, right, this, should the city stop using ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council and reinstate a primary and general voting system or whatever? Like, I think that that's still pretty simple, but is, it provides more clarity and I feel like it is more in alignment with what the petitioners were saying in their petition.
Councilmember Loman?
You know, Mayor, I, hey, I, I, I agree with that, that whole idea of reinstating the primary and general election, I can go along with that. You know, I, you know, in terms of the, the, the A language of continuing it, I, you know, I, I get the idea that these folks have kind of put this forward. But we kind of already have a established process that, that it's already taken place. So my preference would be, you know, if you're going to try to change, you know, what we're doing, like with the A language, it, it says, you know, do we want to continue what we're doing? Yes, or do you want to go to no? I just think that that's more fair to the majority of folks who are already living in the, in the system that we already have today. I get that this is a, you know, a, you know, this is what they're asking for, but I, I just would prefer to do A. But I, I think those changes make a whole lot of sense in terms of, of taking out that majority voting and adding the primary, general election piece. If we had to go with C, you know, I could, you know, I could, I could go with that. I'll do, I still like the, the more simpler language, but I, I could be persuaded to go that way.
Councilmember Rivas, are you looking to get in?
Yeah, I, I mean, everybody has said everything that needs to be said about this. But simplicity is the bottom line. I can tell you from the experience that I gathered while knocking on doors, most people were confused about ranked choice voting. They didn't know how to choose the person they wanted to vote for. And based on that, I mean, I, either, either way, we're all here. We got elected, right? But the reality is that the people that vote us in are the ones that struggle with ranked choice voting. Based on my experience, again, I don't leave where all you live and I just walked. I actually helped other people too, so I did walk a lot, most of the city. But the reality is that most of the people that voted got confused. And we experienced when we recounted everything that there were a lot of votes, a lot of ballots thrown away because people had chosen more than what they needed to choose. So I agree as, as simple as possible, I, you know, if I had to choose one of these, I would go with option B because it's, it makes it a lot easier for people out there to decide whether they want to continue to use RCV or to go back to the primary and general election. The easier, the better. And again, I am speaking on behalf of the people that I represent, or at least a, a good portion of the people that I represent. You know, I, I, I'm not going to say that they don't have a, a, a higher level of education of understanding of the English language. But it's because they have lived simpler lives that they didn't associate with highly educated people on a daily basis. They, you know, the most common language is the best way to communicate with them and the easiest way for them to decide whether they, they vote yes or no on any given item that is presented before them. So I lean on the simplest way to communicate to them without having to, you know, give you any more explanations that everybody has given.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, councilmember De La Sando.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what we've talked about, can we see option C again, please? I think there was one set of words in the Minnetonka one that I thought would be important. And I, there are some situations where a primary isn't necessary. So if there's only two people running, for example. So that if needed that they had in perens, I think would be valuable to have. So if, if we are, if people are generally uncomfortable, like one small set of word changes and option C works pretty well, I think. And we just put the if needed in there. But instead of saying, I still think, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying, councilmember Rivas, and I understand that. But the same people that you're talking about are the people that like put their name on a ballot petition with the word repeal on it. And I just really struggle with the idea that now all of a sudden repeal is not a good word for them. When thousands of people signed a petition with that exact language. I'm just kind of confused, especially since when you look at the petition and you have the addresses, a lot of them are in your district. So, I mean, it's not like, it's not like, you know, it's was all in one section of the city or anything. They were peppered throughout the entire, you know, thing. So again, I, I, I think if we said, should the city repeal using ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council and restate, you know, prime, a primary if, if needed and general election at, you know, per the prior process or whatever you want to say, done and dusted, feels comfortable to me. And then yes, if you want to stop, no, if you want to leave it alone. Works for me. If we can get there, I'd be really happy personally because it just feels very comfortable, feels quite in line with what the petitioners have asked for. I think it's important for, that we honor that. And it's not a lot of words. It's a lot less words than when, 2020, when it passed by 51% plus a couple, right? So I don't know.
So if I'm, if I'm cutting the room here, I think there, there is agreement that the use of majority voting probably doesn't work. And so to spell out the primary and a general election in perens if needed, is there agreement that we put that in the question or in the explanation? I think, I think everybody was moving toward putting that in the question. Does that make sense? Or am I incorrect in saying that? Well, both, yes, it could be in both. Yep, so we could put it in both? All right? All right. And then I think, and then councilmember De La Sando is bringing forward the notion of using repeal as opposed to stop using. And then councilmember Loman, we're back and forth whether or not it's a, say it in the positive and the negative, you know, continue using or stop using, however we want to do it. So councilmember, I mean, councilmember Nelson in first, if I go with councilmember Nelson.
Thanks. My quick comment on this is you might put repeal into the question and then the explanation you use stop using.
Councilmember Carter?
I also wanted to just note that my suggestion had been for it to say Charter Amendment repeal ranked choice voting. Well, so there's Charter Amendment, right? Because that will be on the ballot. So it'll say, or it'll say Charter Amendment, how mayor and city council are elected. I guess that'd be fine if we use the repeal language below. But we could also, similar to this submitted via email, says repeal of ranked choice voting, right? I mean.
Yep. So, go ahead, Ms. Manderscheid.
So I've been listening and editing live, well, live at my computer. And I have a question here. I could, if I could pop it into the, wait, I'll just read it. Okay, so Charter Amendment repeal ranked choice voting is the title. And then the question is, should, or excuse me, yeah, should the city stop using ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council and reinstate the primary election in perens if needed to determine candidates in the general election? Yes, no? A yes vote means you want to stop using ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council. And a no vote means you want to continue to use ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council.
Well, and, and councilmember Muo, I mean, the, I, I heard you say the word repeal and it being in the title Charter Amendment colon repeal ranked choice voting.
I'm a visual person, I need to, I need to see it.
Okay, working on it just.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think Ms. Manderscheid did a good job there of kind of congealing on all the different points we've been making. So thank you for that. The, the only comment I might make is in the title, do you want to be specific in the title? Do you have to be specific, you know, knowing that you have 10 words to work with here? That it's for municipal elections as opposed to any of the other kind of elections that we're talking about here? Because this will be on a ballot for other kinds of elections that are not using ranked choice voting. So do you want to be explicit about that in the title? It's there with, because we say mayor and city council. So, but I think the way that you wrote it was Charter Amendment repeal ranked choice voting at full stop. Should we add like for municipal elections, for mayor and city council?
Elections, I think that's an extra three words and I think it keeps us under 10, so.
Yeah, okay. It, that might, just throwing that out there as a.
That would make sense.
So it's clear that it's just for that type of election that we're talking about.
Councilmember Loman, question? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I don't know if I forgot you after councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman?
I don't want to skip anybody. So just a quick question. When we put forth our original ballot language, when we first passed this, was there a language score on that? Just, you don't recall what that, that was off the top of your?
We remember, there have been a couple of questions on this matter. So I would have to do a little bit of research, but yes, we typically have done that.
Okay, so we tried to, because I'm just curious how, you know, how do we, how do we do that? And then I'm also be curious what this ends up being after we're, we're done with this.
I think a grade level of 10.9.
Kind of in between, huh?
Mr. Mayor, not, not to, not to overstate the obvious here, but, you know, we didn't ask that question when we asked, you know, when this, when folks, the petitioners asked people to sign this, they didn't ask that question. And I, and I love that we do that because I think it's very fair and very comfortable. But I also don't want to, I don't want to assume that we don't have, I mean, we have what, 89% turnout in presidential elections? I mean, we are the highest voting population of Minnesota, if I remember that correctly, the city that brings the most. These are well, I, I just, I don't want to discredit their ability to understand what's on front of them. I mean, they've had 46 judges in front of them and they've done a great job of getting, you know, judges elected, right? So I don't want to, I don't want to assume that we have to, I mean, if we got to 12 as opposed to eight, are, are we doing ourselves a disservice? I don't think so. I think we have a very highly educated and motivated population to, to run this.
I would agree, councilmember. And that number was actually 94.2% four years ago when this passed.
There you go.
So we had almost everyone who could vote in Bloomington did vote and voted in that election.
Yeah.
And I would counter, I, I agree with you and I understand what you're saying with that. I, I might add that when the petitioners got signatures, there was the, the opportunity for interaction. There was the back and forth, there was the explanation, which is then the public information piece that I was talking about earlier. So it wasn't necessarily just the words that led to a signature, I'm assuming. More often than not, I think there was conversation about it as well, which led to a signature. So I, I don't know if that.
No, I think that's very valid, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you saying that. I guess my, my comment would be that if, if we do believe that that engagement is going to happen, then we can assume that by the time everybody gets there, they'll know what the language says and they'll understand it. In which case, using the language that the petitioners put forth seems the most straightforward to me.
Somebody had their hand up and I missed it. Uh, councilmember Rivas. Oh, okay. So do we have any, any success in, in putting it up on the screen that we can all see it?
Mayor, I have one quick question.
Councilmember Nelson.
Is there any confusion with the word municipal? I mean, I understand that to mean city, but would anybody be confused that that might mean also the school district?
That, that's a good point and we, we could easily change that to city offices or city officers.
We did.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, while they're trying to get it up on the screen, you're actually going to see that change as we put for city offices instead of in municipal elections, so. Oh, look at that. There we go. Everybody just take a second to read it. Does this reflect our discussion so far?
Mr. Mayor, I thought we, I thought we were fine using the word stop in the yes vote, yes, no clarifications and descriptors. But I thought we agreed that repeal should be in the question itself. So should the city?
I don't think, I don't recall that as a.
Okay, am I making that up? Sorry.
I, I thought, I heard that as an option, not as a consensus.
Yes, okay, that's fair. So I'll just maybe make the note again.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, this is the bone I want to pick tonight. I don't know why. But I, I feel, I feel like it's, I mean, I just, yeah, I, I don't know. I just, I feel really strongly that the petitioners asked a very specific question and they've worked really hard to get this on the ballot. And that we should put their question on the ballot. Like, I, I don't know, I, I don't know why we're mash, like massaging it so much. Put their question on the ballot. That's what they've asked for.
It's what we call synonyms, repeal or stop are kind of the same word.
Stop using sounds a lot different than repeal to me. Like, stop using means like this time around. Or, you know, I stopped using that gas station because that guy was a jerk, but it doesn't mean I stopped putting gas in the car. Repeal means I don't, I don't, I don't do it anymore. I don't know. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Loman?
Might I suggest, if it's, if repeal is really important, why don't we just put next to stop repeal? Just put it in quotations. Or the other way around, put repeal and then put stop in, in parentheses. Either way, I don't, I mean, just, I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I follow you.
And I, you know, I mean, I get it. You know, we, you know, we've got this folks, folks are coming forward.
We're repealing the amendment and then we're stopping using the method. And I think that's what it should say. Says, should the city repeal the Charter Amendment and stop using ranked choice voting? Like, that to me feels like exactly what this thing is. And I don't know why we're just not saying it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Because, okay. Councilmember Carter?
Well, I just want to say, I do appreciate the fact that we are trying to use language that is more accessible. Like, that is the purpose, right? But I would say, for me, I would be totally fine with it saying, should the city repeal ranked choice voting? Because the purpose of having the a yes vote means and a no vote means is to have that further explanation and like simple clarification. And so I would be fine saying, should the city repeal the use of ranked choice voting with the description, a yes vote means, a no vote means, using stop or continue.
Am I seeing nodding heads on that? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I think under the description, a yes vote means, I think that should also include something about returning or reinstating the primary election. So that it's clear that you, you prefer that method as opposed to ranked choice.
Yep, I think we mentioned that as well. So can we get nodding heads that we, we do use the word repeal? So it's, it would say, should the city repeal ranked choice voting? And then also under the explainer, the explainer, a yes vote means that you want to stop using or repeal ranked choice voting to elect mayor and city council and reinstate the primary election if needed to determine candidates. Everybody good with that? Does that make sense to our legal folks?
I would like to hear it one more time.
Yep. Interrupt me if I'm wrong here, council. So the heading is, as you've got it there, Charter Amendment repeal ranked choice voting for city offices. The question is, should the city repeal ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council and reinstate the primary election if needed to determine candidates in the general election? Yes, no? A yes vote means that you want to repeal ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council and reinstate the primary election to determine candidates in the general election. A no vote means that you want to continue to use ranked choice voting to elect the mayor and city council. Councilmember Carter, what did I miss?
I think you said a yes vote means you want to repeal. And I think we agreed that in that descriptor, we were trying to simplify. So a yes vote means you want to stop.
Stop using, okay.
Just on, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just on the off chance that somebody doesn't understand what repeal means, right? And, and so just being really clear that that means we're going to stop doing this thing that we're doing.
Okay, that's fair. Everybody good with that?
Ma- Mayor?
Ms. Manderscheid?
The one thing that gives me pause in the, in, in the turn of phrase that's should the city repeal ranked choice, the one that you just read. What's actually functionally happening is the Charter is amended to repeal. It's not, it's not the city council that's repealing. So I ran, should the city charter be amended to repeal and left everything else as is? And that is grade level 11.3. If you want, I can send that to the.
Mr. Verugui?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think we're getting close. But what I'd like to do is not take action this evening. I'd like us to go back and just make sure that we understand exactly what it is that you've asked. The wording is what you've asked and then come back on August 5th and have you adopt it that night. Just so we, we don't get crosswise. And that gives us another chance just to take another look at it before we move forward.
Everybody okay with that? Councilmember Nelson and councilmember Carter. Councilmember Nelson?
I just wanted to thank the city manager for that. I'd also just asked if they reach out to both groups and just get any feedback that they have in case we miss something, just so. When we get it there, everyone's comfortable with it, everyone knows what it is and we can let the community decide how to move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I, I think it would be better, and I know that many of them are in the room, if they were to reach out to us. So we don't go to what we think are, are self-appointed leaders of various groups, right? we think are self-appointed leaders of various groups, right? We don't know who's really involved in these things, right? So if they can reach out to us, if they have thoughts, that would be helpful.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was going to say something very similar. You know, we've had a couple of contentious issues over the years where there might be two sides of an issue, and so maybe even potentially having designated representatives, you know, speaking during the next meeting, maybe giving them five minutes or whatever to just say, to weigh in publicly. I'm also happy if they were able to just provide that feedback ahead of the meeting, but wanted to make sure that we really did have the opportunity to hear from people on both sides of the issues. And obviously, we've gotten a lot of emails, but do you feel it's important, just that, you know, they feel good about it too?
Yeah, I think if those folks could reach out with any kind of feedback or input on this, I think we could be well on our way, and I would turn to staff also and strongly advise against over-editing as we move down.
You're right.
Because I think we've got, we've got a consensus or at least getting close to, I think, where we need to be, so let's not, let's not go too far into it, all right? Council, everybody good with that? Very good.
Action, you don't want to, Mayor and members, would you like to continue this matter?
I would move that we continue item 4.4 until our August 5th meeting and ask staff to redraft based on the information presented this evening by council.
Second.
Motion in a second by Councilmember Carter to postpone this until our August 4th meeting, as stated, August 5th, excuse me, August 5th meeting. Everybody cool on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries at 7-0. Thanks for the discussion, council. I think we're in a good place here and we're moving forward. We're going to move on to item 5, our organizational business and a series of updates now. Item 5.1 is an update on our Community Health and Wellness Center. And as city staff is coming forward, maybe we'll give it just a minute here to settle down and folks who don't want to hear the update on the Bloomington Forward stuff. I'm sure they're, they're very interested, I'm sure, in this, but it's already been a long night.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 5.1 is an update, council? Council, item 5.1 is an update on our Community Health and Wellness Center, and Catrice here, and I know our, I know our consultants are here as well to offer input and we're going to have a good discussion on this. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. We have a presentation this evening for all three of the projects, and we're going to start with the Community Health and Wellness Center. Just to remind you all, we are in the feasibility study phase of the community center project that includes a market analysis, a similar service provider analysis, stakeholder interviews, a statistically valid survey, a community survey, an identification of core programs and facility components and associated program space, an operational analysis and cost recovery expectation, a financial pro forma and pricing strategy. That's a lot. We're going to be accomplishing a lot with you all in the next three months. The plan is to update the council in July, August, and September with the hope that we have an approved feasibility study report with the council on September 16th. At that point, we'll move directly to schematic design. I just want to tell the council that if at any point you're not in alignment with any of the assumptions or the direction that we're moving, please tell us immediately. It's really important to get feedback and to get consensus from the council so that we don't stall or delay the timeline under which we're working. HGA is going to be reviewing the agenda for this evening, but I'd like to introduce a few members of the project team that are going to be speaking, but I'd also like to start out by introducing our consultants from Tegra Consulting. Tegra is serving as our project management firm for this project, and I'd like to introduce Nate Pearson and Carolyn Wolf.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. Tegra Group is an owners representative group and we were hired by you to pretty much be an extension of your staff in all things legal, design, construction, budget scheduling, and overseeing the project, so we're very happy to be here.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having us tonight. We have really enjoyed working with the project team thus far and continue to work and share what our findings are with you throughout the process, so thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, and I appreciate the explanation of being an extension of our staff to help staff with all that you mentioned, because Ann is fantastic at running a park and rec department and doesn't necessarily take on $100 million building projects, so to have that expertise is very important, and I appreciate your insight and the expertise and the work that you bring, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nate and Carolyn have been fantastic as partners on this project. I also want to note that Leon from Prose Consulting is joining us via Webex tonight. Unfortunately, he was at the airport at 5 o'clock this morning from Indianapolis and learned that his flight was canceled, so he's going to be joining us via Webex. And I would like to introduce Ted and Glenn from HGA. They're going to lead us through the presentation this evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Glenn Wagasbeck. I'm an architect and design principal with HGA. Hopefully along the way, Ann, you'll consider us extensions of your staff as well. I'm here with my colleague, Tim Gaiat, who's our project manager, and so Tim and I are going to lead you through the first half of the agenda, if I can get the, yikes. Having trouble advancing the slides. Okay, no worries. So we'll give the first half, I'll call it, of the agenda today, an update from the design team. So I represent architects and engineers who will be part of the design team of the project. I'll go over really high-level project history, what brought us to the current effort today. Tim's going to talk a little bit about our current process and schedule. I'll then talk about sustainability as part of the scope effort in this programming phase, review the amenities, sort of a high level, and then share with you a few initial studies for planning for both parking as well as the building. And then we'll turn it over to Leon Younger at Prose to go over the engagement, similar providers, cost recovery, and et cetera. Next slide. Okay, starting with the project history, I mean, get advanced at another slide. I want to talk a little bit about a few previous efforts to ours, starting with the needs assessment in 2015. Just high-level, the findings there are really about what unmet needs were in the community, and some of those included multi-generational programming, health and wellness programming. We're here for the new community health and wellness facility, indoor active space for winter use, as well as health services, kind of a one-stop shop for that function. The next slide shows another effort, which was a market study that the city did in concert with the YMCA. And the summary from that was really what about program spaces, what spaces should be included? And they included a bit broader categories as well as more specific, aquatics spaces, fitness spaces, places for adult, older programming, as well as youth and teen programming, so multi-generational programming. And then in 2019, we had, HGA had helped the city with an update to the, or a pre-design for the facility that, if you go to the next slide, established some, a list of spaces, a scope for a potential community health and wellness center. And so on the left, you see a list of square footages of different proposed components of a potential facility with a kind of bottom-line square footage of about 136,000 square feet. On the right, you see kind of a compilation of the different assessments. One that I didn't mention that's listed here is the Bloomington High School Student Survey. And you can see the hotspots, the high-demand points, still included aquatics and fitness especially, as well as a cafe and coffee shop that's starting to come up with some of the current community survey efforts that Ann had mentioned. None of those results we have to share with you today, but we plan on sharing them later in August. August 26th, I believe, is the date for that. So one of the things that we're seeing so far in that, in the, as the results start to come in, is some consistency with these previous efforts. You know, these were started over 10 years ago, the city's changed a lot, even the way you all do engagement, and that'll be part of what we have to share with you for the process. So Tim is going to talk a little bit about our current process and schedule.
Next slide, please. So this is the overall project schedule, and this basically takes us from the first meeting that we had right after the project kickoff, pretty much all the way through groundbreaking and the eventual ribbon cutting, hopefully sometime in that 2027 land. Next slide, please. But what we really want to talk about today is the programming and pre-design phase, otherwise known as the feasibility phase. In this phase, we are really trying to get at the goals, the vision, and really define the project scope. What's going to go into this facility and really how important to go through the ranking of what are the most important components of this particular facility? Along with that, we will be highlighting opportunities for sustainability, and Glenn's going to talk a little bit about energy use and energy use targets for the future facility. We'll be continuing community engagement, community engagement activities that we've already started as of a few weeks ago, and we'll be actively working in collaboration with the construction manager, J.E. Dunn, to really benchmark building costs and right-size this building design and site with the overall project budget.
Tim, excuse me?
Yes.
Can I get you into the microphone a little bit more, just to make sure you picked up on the broadcast?
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, very good. And then lastly, as Ann mentioned, we are going to be updating you continuously through the project, and we have the project's update scheduled both for next month, late in August, as well as that mid-September date where we're going to be bringing this entire feasibility phase to a conclusion. Click, click? Oh, there we go. There are engagement steps. All right, so as of last week, we did a focus group with teenagers and our, the Camp Coda program is the partner. We will be also, in the month of August, partnering with Todd Pod to talk about parents with young children. In September, there's a community celebration at Creekside event that's tentatively set as the 28th, and we may need to move that around with some other scheduling events. And then we are planning to do a table at the farmer's market on October 5th. And then as this project moves forward, we will be following up with additional engagement opportunities to keep everybody informed as we go through the process. Along with this engagement work is the ETC's statistically valid survey that we're actively crunching numbers and trying to sift through data, and we're combining that with the online and paper survey results that have just concluded about a week ago, and all of that will be shared with council on the 26th of August. And with that, I will turn it over to Glenn.
All right, as part of the establishing the scope of the project, sustainability strategies become important. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what that means for this project, establishing a vision for the project, developing strategies, what that might mean, could be a spectrum of certifications that are options for the project. We've shown a path to a zero-energy facility, so that's a potential goal for the project. And then we had made some recommendations as part of our discussions with staff in the last few weeks. So starting big picture, the sustainability vision is really in support of the overall vision of the project. Can the new facility serve as a model both regionally and even nationally for programming operations and impacts on the community? Well, what does that mean for sustainability? Sustainability is really all about impacts, so, and I've split into four categories on this slide. Building project, a new facility can have impacts on people, its ecology of the landscape around it, impacts on energy use, which is maybe the most obvious one, but also impacts on resources. We're going to make hundreds of thousands of decisions during the design of this facility that have impacts on all of these categories, and a successful project's going to create goals around these categories that are clear and measurable, and that will be keys to a success. So if we can establish a baseline for the project, and I'll talk about a spectrum of approaches momentarily, but also along the way, establishing specific goals that affect or impact people, ecology, energy, resource use along the way, and perhaps even some aspirational goals or stretch goals, we like to call them. I mentioned there's a spectrum of approaches from setting some discrete goals. I also mentioned certifications. You may be familiar with LEED or the Minnesota B3 Guidelines. Those are a couple of examples of certification programs. What's great about those certification programs is it, it keeps us all accountable. It makes us set measurable goals, and then in order to be, achieve certification, we have to meet those goals. So it sort of keeps everyone honest, I'll say. The city of Bloomington, you all have established some sustainability initiatives and are also in the process of establishing even more, and this project is occurring at a great time, which can really pilot some of those aspirations and goals for the city. I mentioned that there's a spectrum of certifications. On the left, you see sort of what I'll call status quo, I'm not sure if that's quite accurate, but meeting basic Minnesota energy code is something that every commercial building has to do, and we'll have to do it here too. But does that, is that what is appropriate for this project? Best practices in the middle might be something like the Minnesota B3 Guidelines, if we follow that, or perhaps a LEED certification, and there's a range of those two. And then on the right, what's more truly aspirational, and you may or may not be familiar with the International Living Futures Institute's Living Building Challenge, which is another certification program that is actually aspirational in all of its categories of impacts. That may be a little bit beyond the reach of this project, but we think somewhere, somewhere in here, it would be wise to consider a certification program. And then we have started benchmarking a path to net zero for this project. So net zero is net zero energy. How much does the building use, and can we offset that energy use over the course of a year with renewable energy sources like solar photovoltaics, for instance? I won't go into all the details, but we're, we're starting to think about how to set that path for this project. And our recommendations to the group that I'd mentioned were to comply with a certification program. Minnesota B3 is really great because it is specific to our region, and it does represent best practices in a wide variety of impact categories. Everything from site to community engagement to selection of materials for, like, healthy materials, good indoor acoustics, so indoor air quality, indoor environmental quality, as well as things like energy and water use. So it's a good baseline for a high-performance building. And then we've identified what I'll call a stretch goal, which is zero energy for the new facility. We think there's a path there, and what makes that aspirational is the fact that aquatics is potentially part of this, and aquatics would, aquatics takes a lot of energy, pumping water, you know, constantly, so, and also moving air and having healthy air quality within an aquatic space takes a lot of energy. And so that's a, that's a challenge that we've set for ourselves, and hopefully you all will go along with that as a goal for the project. I'm going to switch gears and talk generally about what amenities we're currently thinking or considering as part of the project, very high-level. The project is at its very base, 130,000 gross square feet of new building, and then associated site work along with that landscape, hardscape, et cetera. 100, I've listed 136,539 gross square feet here. That came from the 2019 pre-design. We have used that as a launching point for the- We have used that as a launching point for the, the current effort, basically because there's been some consistency in the types of program spaces in previous efforts, just a starting point. We know that the project has a budget, which is 104, $101.4 million project cost, which includes a $75 million construction cost, as well as other soft costs, fees, permitting, insurance, et cetera. So those are our, our big picture constraints. The next line is the park, parking structure. The parking structure, which we believe will, we will need a parking structure based on the studies that we've done in the size of the facility, something in the order of magnitude of 590 to over 600 stalls. As the program spaces and the occupancy and size of those spaces ebb and flow, as we get feedback from stakeholders and staff, as we talk to the community about the needs, you know, that, the size of the building could shrink or grow a little bit, but this is order of magnitude, the size of the project, and the parking goes along with that. And 590-plus stalls that would be required will trigger some sort of, some form of structured parking, and I've got some planning concepts about parking to share with you tonight. In terms of the types of programming that will occur in the building and the types of spaces, they're in these several categories, public health, aquatics, community and program spaces, those are spaces for events and programs. The community center administrative offices, so staff offices, kids' club, drop-in childcare kind of program, building support spaces that every building has, storage, mechanical spaces, et cetera, and then fitness programs, including walking track, three-court gymnasium and sort of fit, traditional, I'll call it, fitness programming. We've also included an indoor playground in that. So this is our kind of high-level description of what's in that 136,000 gross square feet, our starting point. So I mentioned, we've started to take these metrics, the program spaces, the amount of parking, and start to study them on the site, and we looked at solving the parking problem, I'll call it, first. These two diagrams show two, show the site. Let's look at the one on the right first, Level 1. That's the level at grade, street level. The red boundary indicates the parcel. The gray area on the north end of the parcel, along 98th between Newton and Penn, that's what we're calling the potential built area. And then south of that, on the sort of east half of the, or the Newton side of the parcel that extends south, we're showing structured parking on about three levels. So one level below, two levels above, to hit about 600 stalls. So that gives you a, a sense of the scale of potential parking for a building this size on that site. So you can see some of the challenges with retaining open space and amount of parking. Our second option, well, what if we thought, well, could we preserve as much of the open area of the site as possible, preserve that park, and park below the building? So this shows two levels of parking below the building, which would be, is just indicated in gray, there's no building design yet, but the idea is that we zone that part of the, the site for building with parking below it, and then preserve the site to the south for, for green space. And you can see on the south, we've got, just indicated on there for scale, a splash pad, bocce courts, a soccer field, and then some community garden space, to give you an idea of scale. The third study, which is actually one of the first ones we did, was, well, what if we just covered the whole site in parking, which is not desirable, but just to understand, like, what does 600 stalls of parking mean? And it does just about fill the whole footprint of the parcel on one level. And so, there, this particular study 3 really has two variations, I'll call it. One where you just surface park the whole, the whole thing and then build on a level above, and then the other where you bury the parking below grade, build, build on the street level and above, and then perhaps even put a lid over the parking on the south end and create outdoor space above the parking. So those are just three, three and a half, I'll call it, ways of looking at how we could address parking. Separate structure, integrated with the building, and then some combination thereof. So as we start to develop the building program spaces and their relative size, we start to talk with stakeholders, staff, and even the community about what that could be on the site. These are some diagrams that just show adjacencies, and we've got, they're really big-picture ideas, we, and we nickname them. This one, we've, we're calling Main Street. So there's what we'll call an interior street that runs east to west, and a main entry on the south, and you can see in the, and that's the diagram on the left that just has those arrows indicating the street, the general circulation organization. In the middle diagram, those are the zones of program. So you can see the gym on the corner of 98th and Newton, aquatics on the corner of 98th and Penn, and so on the northwest corner, and then public health on the southwest corner there with, you can see there, we're showing a little bit of surface parking that serves public health, and then all of those are organized along that Main Street lobby. And then the diagram on the right just indicates, we know we want to connect this building as much as possible to the site. Indoor/outdoor connections are going to be really important for a recreational facility that promotes health and wellness. And I'll, I'll back up really quickly. So, for these three concepts, we just sort of ran with one of the parking studies, so this one happens to have the independent or separate structured parking to the south that you can see on the southeast portion of the site that extends down towards the Presbyterian homes. The second concept, we've nicknamed the Central Square, so large central public lobby space with all of the program spaces organized around it. So that diagram on the left shows that central area with the circle and the arrows connecting to all the spaces. In the middle, program zone site, you can see in this one, we put the aquatics on the east, public health on the corner of 98th and Newton, and then the gym on the south, southeast side, with the potential of future expansion. If you wanted to expand that gym to be, you know, we're, we're showing what's the equivalent of three gyms now, could be four or five in the future, so there'd be space on the site. This particular option assumes that there would be parking on two levels below it to preserve that open space to the south. And then the site connection diagram on the right shows some arrows connecting visually to parts of the site, but then also the green dash circles indicate nice outdoor courtyard spaces that could be created by the building itself. And then the last concept, we've called the Beacon. The idea is that this would be something that's attract, that attracts people, a place that helps people navigate their way into, on this new community health and wellness center. And so the circulation organization is really along a more vertical but centrally-located lobby that gathers the program zones that you see in, in the center, in this case on a few levels, two to three, perhaps even three levels, to take advantage of that height to create a more iconic building that could also maybe have a more compact footprint at grade. You'll notice in that center program zone diagram, we're indicating parking all the way from 98th along Newton, extending to the corner there, and then the idea on an upper level is we'd have some built structure above that parking. If you think about either the Southdale, the, soon-to-be former Southdale Library for Hennepin County, or even the Galleria, or IKEA for that matter here in Bloomington, yep, those might not be great examples architecturally or from a design standpoint, but you can get the idea of how can you create a lobby with building above. And so in this case, on the ground floor, we'd have aquatics with the pools that are dug into, into grade, public health also on that ground floor for ease of access, as well as the indoor play area. So that can be a really activated beacon space with lobby, and then all of the other program space above, gym and fitness, multipurpose and event space. In this case, there'd be an opportunity for roof terraces as the building stacks. So those are just three concepts that we've started with. We're just in really initial ideation, I'll call it, and we're folding in information sort of as it comes in, and that's, you know, still on its way, I'll call it, on the, the types of priorities for spaces and the needs of the community. So, you know, and I, as I mentioned, that information's going to be reviewed at the meeting on August 26th, along with the remainder of our progress, but I'm going to hand it off to Leon to give an update on the engagement activities, the similar provider analysis that Ann mentioned, and cost recovery goals.
Excellent, Glenn. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to share with you kind of where we are in our process. As Glenn said, we're, we're, we are following the design, we're creating the opportunity for how this building would actually be programmed and organized. Our, I want to, next slide, we, our public engagement process, as you know, I interviewed all of the council people, the, the city manager, the leadership team, the public health staff, the seniors, and special interest groups in the community to get their feedback and your feedback regarding expectations of how this building would be organized, the kind of spaces that were important to you, and how it would be operated and managed. We talked, next slide, we talked about funding sources that typically these type of buildings are organized into. Next slide.
I'm trying to advance it, and I'm having trouble.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. So when we, we look at a funding source like this, we're looking at, obviously, there can be a membership, which typically most of these kind of buildings have. They also have a daily access fee. There's program fees where people can just, you don't have to be a member, you can just take a program. You can have a season pass, you can pay, have a tenplay, there's concessions, rentals, sponsorships, naming rights. I know that you talked about that early in, in the discussion with Ann regarding earned income opportunities to offset the operating costs. All of these funding sources are real, and they do support these facilities. A facility like this is typically open in the neighborhood of 100 to 110 hours a week. So one of the big questions, and next slide, that we, we always focus in on is, what are the expectations of what the building can do financially in terms of covering its operating costs? And so, when, in the process, next slide.
Yeah, I can't, I'm having trouble advancing it, sorry.
Okay. So, one of the things up too far. So one of the things that, there was a lot of mixed feelings about how this operations of this facility could be incorporated. People interviewed had, most of the time, had anywhere between 50 and 80% cost recovery. A lot of people didn't really understand a building like this because most government buildings aren't open 100 to 110 hours a week. Many of the people I interviewed felt like would operate like a library, which is typically in the 50 to 60 hours a week, which is different than this type of a building. So it's really important that, you know, when you're thinking about this, that the operational cost will be somewhere in the three and a half to four million a year, and about 4,000 users per day. So it's, it takes a lot of effort to coordinate that. Some of your other agencies and cities around you can kind of see where their cost recovery goals are now in relation to Eden Prairie and Eagan and Golden Valley and Maple Grove. We also incorporated a couple facilities that our city count, our senior multigenerational centers, where the senior center and the community center is combined into one, and very similar type of facilities as this facility in terms of size and scope. So, within that, we did look at what others, service providers, next slide, had, and in, they'll keep going, next slide. And what we researched, what they're doing in relationship to their buildings, what spaces are most important and most used, and the big thing there is to make sure that we are recognizing their successes and how those successes might be transferred into this building as an opportunity. Next slide. So when you look at these buildings, many of these spaces are 20 years, 40 years, years old, and yet you can see that the impact that they've had on the community in relationship to the services that are being provided, and this building would, in the next three or four years. Next slide, we look at the core spaces that they have in those buildings and how those core spaces match up with your community's interest, and part of the survey is to ask what people's expectations are in terms of core spaces. And as you, if you've been in any of these buildings, you recognize the magnitude of those spaces, but also how well they're used, how wide of age segment they have, and who basically is attracted to those. Next slide. We also really spent a lot of time recognizing how they're programmed and the type of programming that occurs. Most of the program is, is set up where it's organized program, and, but there is a lot of self-directed space where people come and go, like in their fitness rooms or walking tracks. A lot of the spaces are just drop-in spaces for people to enjoy it at no cost. And so part of this, next slide, is to do the same with your building, is to give as many options as possible for people to enjoy the facility. If they want to take a program, they can take a class, they can be a member, they can take a swim lesson, they can walk on the track, they have as many options as we can. And so we just kept looking at how other people in your region are promoting it. One of the things that people always come up with is, how does the insurance memberships work? Typically, there are five different types, next slide, of memberships that are provided to primarily Medicare folks, and part of that is that they're able to get a certain amount of time in the building where it's paid by insurance for health and wellness purposes, through programs like Silver Sneakers, and, and really how, and this includes resident, non-resident rates as well for that, and it gives the community a real opportunity to enjoy it. Other mixed views on different types of spaces that people have, these were the primary spaces through my discussions with people in your community, what people felt were most important. We also did a survey with the public health and what the public health, people who are coming to their sites, what they would expect in the building as, as space for their use and their needs. So these were the kind of the major, and we're matching up how these spaces will really align with what the survey basically said. And then we also had discussions about cost recovery, and by cost recovery, it's about how to recover these spaces, there's a primetime, non-primetime, season, off-season in all of these spaces, and how to maximize them. One of the things that people often ask me is what makes a good cost recovery work? And so part of this is understanding the direct and indirect costs for programs, for facility maintenance and operations, for marketing, technology, security, lifecycle requirements, and this really helps the staff to understand that these spaces all have a cost associated with them. A requirement of at least 50% of the space in the building can produce revenue by that, it has the ability to create revenue from aquatics or fitness or sports or walking track or rental spaces, program rooms, indoor playground, serving kitchens, concessions, these are all opportunities that help to organize the building and also help to generate revenue to offset operating costs. Also, next slide, we really like to see and work with the staff on filling in at least 70% of the operating hours of the building, where each program space has a program opportunity for people to enjoy. Like I said earlier, a lot of the spaces are self-directed, but a tremendous amount is organized. And then also the program space is multifunctional, so can serve a variety of different programs in the same space, so that it's designed, and part of our work is to work with HGA and their team on how that space gets laid out and functioned, and then we overlay the programs into those spaces to make sure that they can actually do what, what the space is intended to do. Also, we really try to stay away from a single-use space because it's really hard to, when you have a 100, 110 hours, that that space is used for one single purpose. Also, we want to keep the staffing cost below 55% of the total budget because it just takes that much to operate it. And then really a mac, a multitude of funding options in terms of, I mentioned earlier, memberships, a daily access rate, the ability for people to sign up for a program, and that they can access. Rental hospitality space really has come up in your meetings with, with people in your community. People prefer a small café concession operations there, and also sponsorship opportunities that are available at these community facilities because of the magnitude of the number of people that go through those spaces, sponsors really see and value, the, the value of, of their sponsorship in the building or a part of the building. Also, we work with the staff in developing a working performer that tracks all the costs. a working performer that tracks all the costs, all the elements of the facility. So, the staff on a monthly basis can see where they are by room, by program, by, by funding source, and how well they're doing against the expectations. One of the big things is, is to really make sure that, that you don't give away any space for free. You can discount it if you want, but giving away free space is, makes it really difficult to make up the cost for different. But there will be free spaces that are common spaces in the, in the building that anybody can use at any time. It's just that how, when we have program space that people want for free, and all towns are always, and people are always asking, can I get some space for free, where they can run their own programs in your building versus, versus the city running the programs? Next slide. And so, when, part of that is if you do discount it to keep it less than 20%, look at the market rates for similar facilities in the region and in your community right now, and then raise money through events or your foundation to self-support your assistance programs for people, so that nobody is ever left out of accessing the building. And really, to really train the staff to operate in, and understand business assistance associated with how the, the building operates, as well as how it functions as a expense to the city, and how to maximize its value and efficiency. So, that's where we are in the process. We're just in the beginning phases of really starting to work with the design team on the program, and working with the staff on what programs. We haven't established a program plan for any of the spaces. We've had discussions with the staff on getting that started, but once we get those programs nailed down, then it's a lot easier for the designers to follow the program. So, I, we come at it from program drives design. So, that's where we are in our process.
Well, thank you, all three of you. That's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Very quickly, appreciate it. Counsel, questions or discussions on this? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I know you would say this, Mayor, too, so, want to thank staff and the, 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 just general hands of staff, I might say, for their work that they've brought up thus far. I really like, kind of, Mayor, what I, what I see that staff is kind of, kind of working towards. And what I kind of think about, when I, I think of this particular building in particular, Mayor, is that I'm really hoping that we can kind of, you know, you, you talked about the idea of centers of community. I'm kind of hoping that this can be that, that gem that kind of fits within that around the city, as we kind of look to your vision in terms of around that. And, you know, I, I kind of think about, you know, when we've kind of talked about our vision in terms of a place where people want to be. And, you know, one of the concerns, I know that there are a number of people have, you know, kind of today, are a number of seniors who currently use, you know, that Creekside building today. And, and what I, you know, kind of what I want to, you know, kind of ask both you, Mayor, and also staff, is how do we get from, you know, where we are today to what could be the future of tomorrow, really, in terms of, you know, how this space, because I think it takes a long, I know we looked at, you know, 2015, 2018, and a lot of that programming was kind of, you know, set in that paradigm, if you will, of really catering to kind of what it is today. And that was, you know, really before we kind of came up with our new vision, in terms of where we're trying to go. And, and that's one of the things that I kind of, I kind of fear, is that we get lost in what we have today in terms of programming, and I know it's been working well for those folks that are part of it, but how do we bring more people to that, to that, to that conversation? So, that's, that's one item. And then, the last item that I have here is really around the, the aquatics piece. And so, we, we, we create great services in the city, and they're renowned across the, you know, I call it across the universe or galaxy in terms of what we do. But one of the things I'm always concerned about doing is that we, you know, we also have ongoing aquatics that's already outdoors. And my concern is that we might, you know, lose the ability to focus and really provide the type of service, you know, in that particular area with the new thing that we're trying to do, because we're, we're still got our foot in the past, in terms of that old program. And so, I'm just wondering how we had that conversation about that. How do we understand what that means in terms of where we're at? So, those are the two things that I, I kind of say, in terms of we're looking, as we're looking forward to where we're trying to be.
Ms. Katri.
Councilmember Lohman, Mayor members of the council, to answer your first question as it relates to current programming at Creekside, we're very excited about moving a great majority of the programs that we have at Creekside currently to the new community center. And I think that creating a model and a structure and a, and a program space for that to happen is very viable. I think the point to note that, that Leon mentioned is, single-use spaces in a new community center are going to be very challenging for us. But we're taking the program and the feedback that we're hearing from our current Creekside Community Center members very seriously, and we're working as a city to try to figure out how we can potentially accommodate those users, and those users maybe in a different space. For example, the Center for the Arts. The Center for the Arts offers spaces that we might be able to utilize to accommodate some of the single-use spaces that we currently have at Creekside. I think it's also important to note that we're considering a form of a makers' space at the new Community Health and Wellness Center, too, that could be a flexible space that could serve a variety of different types of arts, crafts, and handmade type of programs in the new facility. So, we're, we're excited to be able to accommodate as much as we possibly can of the current offerings at the new Community Health and Wellness Center. As it relates to aquatics, we're very open and interested in having conversations with the city council on what aquatics looks like in a new community center, and if there are any other changes or recommendations made from the council, from the Bloomington Family Aquatic Center, we're open to having that discussion as well. Let us know what you would like to talk about, what you'd like to know about that facility, and we're, we're happy to host that form of a conversation. I think it's important to note that we do view the recreational amenities that we're proposing to offer at the community center for aquatics as something pretty different than what is offered at the Family Aquatic Center. You're all familiar with the facility. You don't need me to describe it to you, but one of the major components is a 50-meter lap pool. There are very few of those left in the state of Minnesota. To lose that as a, as an amenity to the community would be, would be difficult for sure. Also, the slide structures, zero depths, you know, it's a, it's a really, really treasured amenity for the community. But absolutely, we're, we're open to having that conversation, and interested in having that conversation with the council, if you'd like.
Thank you. Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here and doing such a great job of presenting the current state of this. As far as the aquatic center, I'm very excited for this, because I know in the winter, so many young families leave Bloomington to go to under other indoor facilities. And I've said this before, if we give people enough reasons to leave, someday they're going to stay gone. And so, being able to provide this service that supports not only young families, but our seniors as well, being that multi-generational piece of it is very important to me, and I think is going to drive a lot of just value in the spread of knowledge and information within our city. A couple things I was thinking about, as I was driving here tonight, I drove by Creekside, and I normally don't drive by Creekside, and I noticed there were people waiting at the bus stop. Something I would like us to consider and work with Met Transit on, if we're going to build a community center like this, is making sure that Met Transit helps us support and build bus stops, covered bus stops, at our new community center, so that people, we know people use all forms of transportation to get to Creekside currently. And so, how can we get that support from Met Transit to ensure that covered bus stations are there, so that people can freely get in and out without worrying about the weather? Because right now, they, the person I saw standing out there is standing out in the sun, and it's hot in the sun. And so, how can we take care of our residents that way? As far as the cost recovery, I know the conversation's around about 80%, and I'm of the mind of starting at 100% cost recovery. I think that not only ensures that we can prove that this is a sustainable project, to continue the long-term support of the community and the center, but then gives us also ability to adjust as we need to. I think, starting at 80%, while it's in line with some of our other communities, doesn't offer us the ability to be more creative in how we run our organization there at the community center. So, that's kind of where I'm at with that. So, things to think about. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I took away specific asks on two items, the cost recovery and the parking situations. Offer my opinions on those. On the cost recovery side, I, I think 80 to 100% is fine. I, I'm, it's interesting here, because I'm a, a bit of a, of two minds on this one. On one hand, you know, we're going to, if we're going to consider this an enterprise account, we're always striving for, you know, 100% cost recovery on an enterprise account. Interestingly, you know, we don't really ever really achieve that. And so, I, there's a bar that I think we're placing potentially on ourselves that, you know, we're not getting to. I think the work that we're going to do at the big is going to help a ton with getting that place to, like, enterprise, you know, break even or better, right, which is great. I don't think the aquatic center, the family aquatic center ever gets there. I'd love to see it get there, but it doesn't sound like it might. But we do have an opportunity here. So, I, I'd be fine if shooting for 100, and, and like you said, Councilmember Mu, backing down from that. But I also, the other mind that I have is that this is a, you know, a, a premier, you know, community amenity, and that some portion of, of, you know, community dollars going to a community amenity is fine with me. And so, you know, I think that's why I sit in like the, anywhere between 80 and 100% would be fine, because I think we can make good cases for any of those numbers. So, that's where I'm at on cost recovery. When it comes to parking, I, I really, really don't like that we have to figure out how to put 600 cars in this thing. I, it frustrates me, because I'm always frustrated whenever we talk about parking first. It drives me nuts. But that, y'all are used to that at this point. But if, if that's truly the number, and it's not a number that's somewhat arbitrary, and I mean arbitrary as in we have this formula of 1.5 parking spaces per X number of feet, and that's what we're doing. If we really do have a study that says, like, at maximum volume, 600 people could be at this place, or 600 cars, which means 600, at least 600 people, maybe even 2,400 people, if you're talking families of four, then, you know, then I think there's accommodation there. I, if that's true, then I'd like us to try to minimize the amount of footprint that we take to do that. I, underground parking, the concept of some underground, above ground, and then the green space on top, all of those are intriguing to me, because they do, they do eliminate, you know, this thing becoming half of the land we are creating is just for surface parking, which is just not what we want to do anymore, I don't think. So, I liked, I liked the kind of, you know, either all underground, or partially underground, partially above ground with the, with the green space on top. I thought that was kind of innovative. You could even have like a, if you did that, plus a little two-story type situation, or you had the ability to like, get up on that deck from the second floor, from an observing area, or a balcony, or the cafe, right, or something. You did something kind of innovative there. It would be kind of a really interesting way of, of thinking about the space. So, I'm, I'm into that. The other, only other thing on sustainability I'd like to add, since you had that, thank you very much for including that. I appreciate your willingness to put that front and center in this initiative. I think people want that. And so, really appreciate that. I, I'd, I'd love us to be thinking outside the boxes that relates to the way that we manage the water for the aquatic portion of this facility. You know, I, I'm not convinced we have to go, you know, loading it up with chlorine and create a bad environment. There's all kinds of other filtration and doing saltwater pools and other things like that, that allow you to be more flexible with some of the water. So, you know, if we can think about that, and if we can think about some recapture or recirculation of the water as well. For example, you know, gray water systems for at least the, you know, the toilet system, or for irrigation, you know, anything non-potable that you could use in irrigation. I like those concepts as well. You know, you can always bury a charcoal filter and let the groundwater do its thing, right? So, there's all kinds of cool stuff that, that's out there, and I'd love for y'all to innovate on that as well. I don't, I think that was everything that was part of like the open questions for now. My understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that we're going to have to decide this parking sooner rather than later. Is there any particular action tonight that we need to take on that one issue?
No, I believe this is, this is an information-only presentation. I think your feedback and your ideas, I think will be well-accepted and worked as part of it, but I don't think we're making an official decision on anything tonight.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have. Appreciate it.
And, and I will say, I, I agree with you in terms of the number of parking spaces. I think that's arbitrarily imposed by our parking standards. And I'd, I'd be curious to hear if the 590 are necessary for a facility that it's expecting 4,000 people a day, certainly not all at one time. So, I'd, I'd like to learn more about that. I'd like to learn about the possibility of just using a proof-of-parking concept on this. And we don't necessarily need to go to 590, I don't think, but I'd, I'd like some more information on that. And I'm right there with you in terms of getting an underground and putting a turf field on top of it, and making it a usable space. I think it'd be the way to do it. Counsel, other comments, questions, ideas, thoughts, hopes, dreams? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. One, I think one of the most important things we do is maintain outdoor space. Somehow, we can't just surface park that. The original task force, I mean, three of their recommendations were indoor and outdoor spaces at the community center. I, I'm just going to say this, when we first looked at it, we looked at a small, medium, at Creekside, and this is like, what, 2018, small, medium, large, and so, and now it looks like we're looking at just the large programming there. And I'll be honest, I'm just very concerned that, you know, we haven't even got into design, and we're $20 million over budget. I, I just, I don't, I don't, I guess, I'm confused by that, and I don't understand how we can be in that situation.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just so you can clarify, the $20 million over budget is assuming there's structured parking added. So, the base budget includes surface parking for this project, and, and you've seen the consequence of a surface parking decision, right? So, there's still more conversation to be had, but I don't want anybody to infer that we are $20 million over budget before we've even gotten to design.
Fair enough, but nobody wants the surface parking, so.
Others, counsel? All right, very good. We still have a couple more presentations, so I think I will thank our consultants on this, and appreciate the work that's gone into this, and thanks for the information. And we will move on to item 5.2, our, the Ice Garden.
All right, thank you. So, Leah Hughes, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, I will give you a quick update on the Bloomington Ice Garden renovation project. And I do have a PowerPoint. Should I test this, just to see? Ooh. It worked? All right. So, this first slide is one that you are going to see often. This is just the planning and design phases that we are referring to and referencing in all of our sales tax projects, in addition to just the parks projects in general. And so, one of the things I want to express with this particular slide is that the Ice Garden renovation is in the design development phase. And so, we are in that, that medium 60% to 90% design phase. And so, what we'll be doing is, at the end of this presentation, I'll be issuing an invite to tomorrow night's open house event at the Ice Garden, where we will be getting feedback and comment cards on the current design iterations that we have, because that is one of the promises we've made to the community as we enter that 60 to 90% phase. All right. So, just to remind you briefly, the goals of the improvement is really to update all major mechanical systems in the facility as they're aging and failing. So, that includes HVAC, ice systems, plants, plumbing, electrical, things of that nature, improving AD accessibility throughout the facility as a whole, improved the parking lot configuration. Right now, the parking lot runs from east to west, so we have guests to the facility walking through cars. We are going to reconfigure that to make it safer, and so that there are clear visual aisles in the parking lot. In addition to downsizing Rank III to a standard size, which will allow us to build locker rooms and some stadia and make Rank III and make rank three the main rink. In addition to just overall trying to improve the guest experience by modifying some of the building flow in the main corridors, security, adding some restrooms, in addition to changing where the concessions and some of the offices will be located. Here is an image of the main floor renovation as it stands at that design development phase. So I've got some, some numbers on here, so you know what I mean when I reference ranks one, two, and three. In addition to, I've highlighted some areas on the map, and I'll explain some of the little geo-fenced areas in red. So what I'd like to start with is I'll talk about some of the rank three modifications that we're going to be seeing. As I mentioned, we're transitioning that rank to a smaller size, fifteen feet smaller, to be precise. And what that allows us to do is we'll be adding, actually, I think I went too far here. There we go. Three locker rooms where the current dryland training areas, so that kind of peachy side on the left side of rank three is where those locker rooms are going to go. There's also going to be a new concession, so that, that darker blue area to the bottom of where the locker rooms are located, concessions will be moved, so that way there'll be better flow in that lobby area, freeing up some of that main corridor. To the right of that, that large green bank, again, below rank three, those are going to be new individual use or universal restrooms added. So I think at this point, there's something like twenty six toilets added in that one area alone. We're adding stadia in rank three, so that adds occupancy. And so we needed to add some restrooms to that facility just for guest experience, in addition to occupancy requirements. The areas that are highlighted in yellow are all the ADA accessible viewing points that will now be on that main level. So you can see that ranks one, two, and three have considerable ADA access viewing areas added. We're also modifying and renovating all the locker rooms, so all the light blue locker rooms that you see in between ranks two and three, and then along the north side of one and two, they're going to be renovated and improved with seating and other amenities. We're modifying all the restrooms and adding restrooms between the ranks and along where the locker rooms are located. Again, they're going to be universal restrooms that are added that are in the hallways, so they're easily accessed by anyone who's using those areas. We are relocating the offices to that middle tan section underneath rank two. They will still be located near the main entryway for just flow and ticketing. But they also will maintain that rentable area, which is where the, if you guys have been there, the wood floor, the choreography room for figure skating, the offices will take up about half of that, but we'll still have a rentable space on that first floor. And then we are consolidating the figure skating and skate school offices and storage areas just below rank one, so that way all of the things that need are in that one area. Any, I'll stop there. That was a lot. So any questions there? Two other really important ADA additions are two elevators. You'll see there, they're the blocks with X's in the middle, so there's an elevator to the second level in between ranks one and two, and ranks two and three, to help get that audience view from the bleachers or the stadia view, which will be new. Here's the second floor view. So again, the highlighted areas in yellow are more ADA accessible seating. The area between ranks one and two on the second level, that front portion is going to be an enclosed viewing area, for those of us like me who don't necessarily want to sit in the cold. If you want to view, right? Not the best hockey mom. If you want to view from indoors, where it's much warmer and probably a little more comfy, we're going to have an indoor lobby area, in addition to a rentable space, a meeting space, which is that gray area. And then to the left of that, which is, I think, yellow on this slide, is going to be a shooting area or a dryland training area, in addition to some storage. There will be a mezzanine that circles rank three, so people will be able to get from one point to another all around rank three, as that will be the main rink for viewing as well. There are also four stair levels that will go up to the second level as well. And so some of the other updates, where we're at in this project. If you guys remember, in 2023, we did a full assessment with JLG of the building, and had that report given to us to kick off this project in December 2023. You approved the purchase of the long lead time items, which are the refrigeration equipment and dashboard and flooring packages. You guys did that on April 29. We moved into schematic design in May of 2024, and at that time, the renovations that I just explained to you, we had RJM, who is a construction manager, assigned pricing to make sure that these renovations were within our budget. And we are pleased to let you know that we are very, very close. And then we officially moved into design development, and that should say June 2024, but apparently I was missing my key there. Some other updates that you should be aware of is we did a geothermal survey. After reading that report and going over the report with sustainability staff, it was decided that geothermal is not really a viable solution as far as sustainability for this. With it being a renovation, we had to choose whether or not geothermal was going to be applied to the ice mechanical side or the rest of the building. The ice mechanical side would have had the bigger energy impact, and so that was what we focused on. And after we got the report back, the impacts, as far as cost recovery and other sustainability impacts, we're hoping utilities was not high enough to make it really a viable option. So what we've done is we've switched from focusing on the potential of geothermal to focusing on using as much electrical equipment as we can. We do know that rank three's roof is solar-ready, as it's the most recent build and has the most infrastructure already in place. We are currently surveying rank two to see if that would also be solar-ready to further improve the sustainability of that particular facility. And then some of the next steps you'll want to be aware of, that's that open house that I was talking about, which is tomorrow night, between six and eight. It starts off with a fifteen-ish minute presentation with Mitchell Borgan from JLG, who will go in more in-depth with some of the renovation points that you've seen. And then after that, there'll be a Q and A and tours of the facility. JLG has their own presentation that I really wanted to steal for tonight, but I couldn't because I want you guys to have fun and see that for tomorrow. But we're going to have posters with a lot of these renovations, and more detailed points on what the impacts of those are going to be. And then the next event that you'll want to know is there is a groundbreaking ceremony that is scheduled for September. We will be breaking ground for the ice mechanical envelope. So the building along the backside that faces where the armory is, we do need to start construction on the new ice plant envelope. And so we're doing that in the fall. And then following that, we will do some in-house pre-prep for construction along where the dryland training currently is, because we need to start prepping for the stadia that will go in on rank three. And then the full closure is still planned to happen between mid-March through fall 2025. So with that, I will take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Actually, I have a couple.
Yes.
Is there, are there any estimates yet about what the utility savings are going to be, once all of those sixty-year-old utilities are no longer, once they've been replaced with something new and more efficient?
Right. Mayor, thank you for the question. Right now, we are making our best estimates we can, having talked to some of the utility staff and MSROs and sustainability. So in our 2025 budget, you know, it's only roughly about four months for 2025, right? So really, we're trying to make some estimates on what we could potentially save. I can't quite remember what those percentages are, but we are really kind of working in percentages at this point. It will really take about a year, or maybe more, to see what those utility bills look like. Because that is one of the biggest unknowns, actually, because utility bills, I mean, obviously, we're hoping that that has a pretty huge impact with new equipment, more efficiencies, and some of the sustainability measures we'd like to employ. So, right now, we're just guessing.
Okay.
If I'm honest with you.
Fair enough. And my other question, what, what will the capacity be on rank three?
Right now, we're still playing with seating, because ADA seating does impact that. But it's anywhere between sixteen hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty.
And what is the current seating capacity for rank one?
Do you know what it is?
It's close.
It's close?
It's less, but it's not a terrible amount less. We're trying to massage that to get it as close as we can, but the ADA seating will impact that because you do take out the two rows in front.
And other than section finals, do we ever get to capacity at the Ice Garden?
Some of the tournaments are, are
Tournaments.
Very intense, actually. Yes, we do.
Other questions, council? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. What I want to also say, on this one here, awesome job, kind of moving this forward. Come a long ways on this, and I know that staff has been working really hard. And what I would, wanted to just comment on is I know that several years ago, that the city manager had brought, you know, to this council, and past councils, the concern over our, you know, our buildings and our capital, from a capital expense standpoint, in terms of what we needed to kind of do. We had really a backlog for various reasons that kind of got us there. And this is just an example of an investment that we are really making to try to kind of fill that hole. And, you know, and as we kind of move forward with this, one of the concerns, I know that people, that I've heard just from knocking on doors, in terms, you know, we've got the fire station, you know, the fire stations are coming up, we're overhauling all of our fire and those types of things. And so, you know, I just wanted to give the city manager, maybe the mayor, the opportunity to kind of make a comment on that, because, you know, we've got, you know, several of these things that are coming up. We've got additional ongoing expenses. Here's an example of where we're trying to right-size that, you know, so I thought this would be the more appropriate one to kind of bring it up on. But I think, I think it's important to kind of comment on this now, in terms of where we're at and what we're trying to do, in terms of that, those circumstances, situation. I know that's, that's not what we're trying to do here today, but there are some budget implications of some of the things we're doing here, because of where we've been at, to get us to this standpoint. So, Mayor, manager?
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. And just very succinctly, these are, a lot of this city was built in the nineteen seventies. And like anything that came from the nineteen seventies, it's now time for updates and replacements or improvements. And frankly, in a lot of these cases, whether it's renovations of the Ice Garden, or moving to a full-time fire department, which is what is necessitating those new fire stations, those cans have been kicked down the road far enough. And we've got to, it's our responsibility now, as stewards, we've got to, we've got to step up and make those, make those investments. And it's, I mean, we're stewards in a number of different ways. We're stewards of the finances of this city, of the tax dollars that are collected and spent by the city, but we're also stewards of the, the physical structures within the city as well. And I think it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that we take care of those. And it's our responsibility that we ensure that the services that we provide, in terms of, for example, fire, or as we move into the discussion of the Public Works Building, that we provide the, the space and the facilities, and ultimately, the equipment necessary to provide the services that we do within the city. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, the only thing I would add, Mayor summarized it really well, is, is to say that this, this is not just the consequence of deferred maintenance. I mean, you know, there may be some of that. But, you know, I've heard from residents, well, my house is fifty or sixty years old, it doesn't need to be replaced, right? We have a very different operation than somebody's house. And so the equipment that we are using to run our operation is very different than it was back in the sixties and the seventies, right? So in addition to the buildings just being older, is the apparatus, for example, with the fire department, is much larger than it used to be, right? And so to adequately equip our, our department to do the work, and to be able to house that equipment, it requires new buildings. Similar with the maintenance garage that we're proposing, as much of the equipment we're using today is larger, more sophisticated than what the current maintenance garage is able to accommodate, right? So this isn't just about, stuff got old, the city didn't take care of it, and now we have to tear it down. That's, it's a lot more complicated than that. Mayor pointed out, moving to a full-time fire department. We didn't have living accommodations at any of the fire stations, right? And if we're going to have full-time firefighters, we have to be able to provide for them in those stations. So the, you know, the, things are rarely as simple as people would like them to be, right? But the fact is that we have a major capital facility asset management program here in the city. We are much better today than was the case decades ago, in terms of identifying how we plan long-term reinvestment and replacement. And that's what we're on track to do over the next decade. And it's, it's not going to be easy, right? Council's been having this discussion going back to 2015 or 16, when the council first asked for a plan on how we do this. Well, we're moving forward on the plan.
Thank you for, for succinctly doing that. I know it's a lot to ask, but I think we've, we just got to reset the gauge so that people understand what we're looking at.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thanks for being here. I had a question about the timeline for engagement with the constituents who use the locker room facilities and things like that. When and where on your timeline is, is that engagement happening? I don't assume we're going to get to that level of detail at the open house tomorrow, obviously. So where are you, where are you planning to do that work?
So, Councilmember Alessandro, thank you for the question. We've actually engaged with them throughout this whole process. So we started this project with stakeholder interviews. And those stakeholders included Bloomington Public Schools, hockey teams in general, included the Baha Hockey Association, it included the Figure Skating Club, the Skate Club, and a myriad of other stakeholders I'm, of course, forgetting right now. So we started the whole process with interviews with them, and frankly, just asked them what's working, what's more importantly, not working, what's meeting your needs and what's not meeting your needs. And so we just took these interview notes and, and recorded them. Those were shared with, with the architectural engineers. And then when it comes to your specific example of locker rooms, Anne Catrue and I actually have had a meeting with, with the Bloomington Public Schools individually, to show them these exact same maps and highlight the areas that would be of interest to them. They've also been informing us on what needs to be inside those locker rooms. So the coaches' rooms, preferred size, number of lockers, a whole bunch of things I'm going to miss, like hockey lockers and other, other things such as that. So they have been engaging with us the entire time. We're doing the same thing with the Figure Skaters Club, too. Tomorrow's going to be kind of the big kickoff, though. So the hope is that a lot of those stakeholders are there. We're going to try to get more of their feedback. Now they're going to have more detail on some of the things that we've talked about with them. But, for example, those locker rooms, we have been engaging with the people who would be using those. This will probably be our third, third-ish time so far in the process. So that pre-design, schematic design, and design development, that this will be our third time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And we will move on in our agenda to our third update, and this being on our Nine Mile Creek Corridor renewal project. Thank you for sticking a note with us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Renee Clark, Assistant Director of Parks and Park Projects, with Bob Simons from Engineering, Project Manager on this project. And in the audience, another co-lead, Dave Hanson, Assistant Director of Parks and Natural Resources. We're here tonight to provide a status update on the Nine Mile Creek Corridor renewal project. I'll talk about project status, the design process, and community engagement and upcoming We kicked off the project June 5th with the community with a celebration at Moyer Park. We estimated about two hundred people came to that event. People came and shared stories about why they loved the park. And a new video was posted on the project website today by our communications team with those stories, Why I Love Nine Mile Creek, that highlights those interviews. So I really want to say thanks to our award-winning communications staff. They're a big part of all these projects, this project specifically. They've been doing a lot of work. And I want to call to the attention, on the project website at the very end, there's a series of videos with our staff in park maintenance that specializes in natural resources, talking about the natural resources in Bloomington restoration. The latest video is with Jack Distel. It's underwater video in Nine Mile Creek, talking about ecology. I believe Anne referenced it as one of the best government information videos she's ever seen. Really, really well-done and informative, so I wanted to call the attention to those. Staff will continue, as Ms. Hughes said, to use this graphic to communicate process and schedule for these projects. We're in the pre-design phase right now, collecting technical information, doing topographic survey, natural resources survey, including a wetland delineation of everything in the park, as well as bridge and trail assessments. Our work's been slowed a bit by high water, but is continuing right now today. And then, of course, we are listening to the community, getting their shared values and ideas for this project. The graphic before you describes a process that is described on the project website about how we're getting to a concept plan the end of this year. Again, we're listening to the community right now, learning their vision and values for this project through the end of the end of August, our design team will be creating a concept plan that'll come to the community with the Decision Matrix in October, then to Commissions November, and then Council in December. For community engagement, there are a number of things coming up and scheduled, and this sort of reviews how that fits into the design process, getting us to the concept plan that comes before you in December. On June 30th, we're hosting a creek walk that starts in Harrison Park. This is a really well-planned-out event that'll include our staff, experts on natural resources and water resources, a partner from Hennepin County, as well as our design team staff that will be at stations, talking about natural resource issues and opportunities within the park. That event will be followed up by a focus conversation with anybody that wants to attend to share their comments, feedbacks on what they heard, questions with staff. The week of, this coming week, we will have two focus conversations, one with, regarding ADA and accessibility, and another focus conversation regarding bikes, circulation, trails, and accessibility. August 7th, a Moyer Park Planning Event will be hosted in Moyer Park, and that is also on the project website. We'll be back in front of the community in October with a concept plans and Decision Matrix, to Commissions November, and then again, in Council in December for direction for bike facilities, natural resource goals, and then overall, big picture direction. The start of 2025, then, we will have a concept plan to review with Council and the public, and that will really initiate the next planning phase of schematic design. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Council questions here? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the first question I have is, is there any plan, based on the information you said, I'm going to, I'm going to guess no, but maybe, maybe there is. I feel like, like this fall, there's some natural resources work that could be done, that doesn't necessarily require community engagement per se, meaning like, there's invasive species, we should take them out, kind of thing. Is there any of that kind of planned along the way to kind of take advantage of like, the fall, you know, the, the seasonality of the next year or two years to kind of try to get ahead of that? And maybe that's a question for Dave. I don't mean to put you on the spot for it. But just because we know that the, that the, you know, those things are things we absolutely want to be doing, and I think we have broad consensus that that's something that's necessary to preserve the park.
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, Members of Council, I would like to ask Dave to answer that.
Good to see you again, Dave.
Thanks for the question, Councilmember DeLisandro, Mayor. I think we need to wait until, and I totally appreciate the question and get your point, and you're exactly right on. But we want to make sure that we've got all of our design work done for the entire park before we go embark on any of that. We are working on 10 acres or so on the corner of 106th and Humboldt right now. That's keeping us fairly busy, and there'll be winter work that goes on there. But we're not, we don't have plans to go ahead right away this fall.
Nothing wholesale.
And do work down there in the winter.
Okay. I appreciate it. Second question's probably for you, Mr. City Manager. I don't know whether or not it's too soon for me to ask this question. Probably is. I'm curious about whether, what the process is for understanding, like, the quarterly sales tax review process, so that we know how we're doing against the, and this is kind of summation of all the three projects, obviously. But I'm just kind of curious if you can answer for us what the, what the process will be for us to understand how our revenues are coming in against these projects. And I, that came to me when I asked this question, because I'm like, maybe they don't have the money to do it. That's why they can't do it. But I was just curious about it.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, we get regular receipts from Department of Revenue. We've already been informed of what our receipts were for the first month that the tax was active, which was April of this year. We received that about two weeks ago. So there's about a three-month lag time on, on that information. And those receipts were over a million dollars in that first month. If that tracks, we would approach the high end of what we thought the possible range of revenue was.
And so you expect to get that on a monthly basis, but about three months in arrears?
Correct.
Okay. Would it be possible for us to get a, a three-month quarterly-type report to the Council?
We can provide that, yes.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Council, additional questions here? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. So then, I know I've asked this before, and I'll just keep asking it. But in terms of those bridges that we've got there, do we know what the, what the lifespan is of those current bridges that we have up there in terms of how long those ones are supposed to, how long they're supposed to last? And if those are in the scope of the, the project here, or outside of the scope of the project?
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, that's a great question. Those bridges that are in place right now, as Renee had mentioned, the consultant team is taking a look at those, or will be taking a look at those. Structural integrity of those bridges. The lifespan of those bridges, not, not 100% sure, to be honest with you, but I believe like 50 to 75 years. Now with that said, with this project, we're going to go through and look at the, the structural integrity of the bridges currently, but then also take into, take into consideration the other work that may be occurring in the area when it comes to stream bank erosion, things of that sort to look at, if the location of those bridges are where they need to be, or if things need to be moved. So with that said, that, the structural component of it will be reviewed by the consultant staff, and then we'll go from there on whether or not any of these bridges really do need to be replaced, or if there's other factors that would contribute us to need to do some, some bridge work, if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, I imagine that those bridges would, would be considerable amount of an investment, or take away from our, our, in terms of trying to restore that. And that's the piece that I'm just trying to get my, my mind around, in terms of when we look at the design component of it, you know, to try to restore kind of what we have there. What does that price tag look like? And then, again, same kind of questions I asked the last time, in terms of the balance, you know, what's left over from that, in terms of what types of amenities make sense there in terms of that area. So I'm just really trying to understand, from a restoration standpoint, what does that price tag look like by itself? And then, what are these amenities that we're trying to do? And how do we kind of prioritize as a council, really, in terms of where that, you know, because my understanding in terms of what we went to the, to the public with, was really around the idea of restoring, you know, these natural resources. And so I just really want to keep focused on, on that, that part of it. You know, we, we talk about, you know, when we put things and, you know, put things on ballots, and that type of thing, and sticking in terms of what we say that we're going to do. And here's an example of where we can really kind of do that and have that accomplished. So in, in terms of that, in terms of the design, do you have any comments around that? Hopefully I haven't been too vague in terms of what I'm asking.
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, Members of Council, the pre-design work will really inform those, those decisions, and then followed up by what we hear from the community in terms of priorities, and what we hear from Council, to create a concept plan. And then it's schematic design is really where we get our first look at costs. We can make some, some estimates earlier than that, because we know generally cost per acre of some natural resource restoration techniques. But really, the first assessments of cost will be in schematic design, and I expect that roughly mid-2025, if, if we're getting our concept agreed upon early in the year.
Thank you. And I'll ask this last one, again, not my question here at all, not, not something I'm necessarily interested in. There's a great deal of concern about bike trail, and when that decision-making process might be done with respect to this, whether it be, you know, two separate, you know, trails, one with a bike, one with walking, you know, maybe one combined. When might the public kind of look to see something like that happen?
Members of Council, Councilmember Loman, we are specifically targeting a concurrence on bike facilities, natural resource restoration direction, and overall park design direction at the end of the year at that December meeting. It doesn't mean that the last detail on those facilities will be flushed out, but direction on bike facilities that we're pursuing will have our technical analysis done, incorporate feedback from the community and users groups, and, and bring that discussion to you in December.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, anything additional? Councilmember Rivas?
I just have a question in regards to the bike trails. If I remember correctly, in previous meetings, it was denied that there was a plan for a bike trail. It was made public, that it was never taken into consideration. So when did you come to the decision that that was part of the, of a design during this time? I mean, I, we have had maybe three meetings in regards to this, and in every one of them, it was denied that there was a plan for a bike trail. But now it's obviously part of a design. So when did that conclusion was made?
I always thought there was.
No.
Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, Members of Council, thank you for the question and the opportunity to clarify the design process. So where we are in the design is gathering information about existing conditions. The idea to explore the possibility for a bike trail was part of the kind of project concept idea that we talked about with the community before the election. It's not part of the design yet. We haven't started, you know, really designing the project and that project development process. We're in pre-design, again, learning existing conditions on what's possible, learning from the community what's desired. A bike facility, a shared trail, two trails, no bikes, is all something we're exploring as part of this pre-designed phase. So there has been no decision on if there will be a bike trail, and we don't have enough information to know if a bike trail is possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Council others?
Councilmember Muah? Thank you, Mayor. More of just a comment. I just want to thank you for all the work that you guys have done. I know, especially with this conversation around the bikes, when this came up for discussion during the ballot question, I specifically asked, you know, the Nine Mile Creek project in itself is a little, was a little more vague, right? And the explanation we got was that we have to allow residents to understand the full scope of possibilities, right? Not that we have specific plans that we're doing this, but we have many stakeholders within the city, within the region. We know that people come from many different states, cities, to enjoy Nine Mile Creek, and have many different things that they would like to see in Nine Mile Creek. So having the opportunity for residents to provide that input was a big reason why that piece was included in the ballot question. And so I just appreciate the, the work that you guys do to continue to have the community engagement, so that we can drill down to what is it that residents and the community truly want, without excluding prematurely things that people might be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Appreciate the information. We will move on to item 5.4 on our agenda. This is our fourth update of the evening. This is regarding the Riverview Corridor Transit Planning. Mr. Kevin Roganbuck from Ramsey County is with us this evening. Kevin, thanks for sticking with us into the evening now, and looking forward to the update.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be on your agenda. I know you have a, a very busy, you had a very busy agenda, and I appreciate being, being able to, to be here. All right. I'm just kidding. So here, are you able to see my presentation?
We can see your presentation. We can hear you well. The floor is yours.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor introduced me, I'm Kevin Roganbuck with Ramsey County Public Works. I manage the Communications Public Engagement Consultant Contract and the Stationery Planning Contract for the Riverview Corridor project. The Riverview Corridor Modern Streetcar Project is a 12-mile planned transit connection. It connects downtown St. Paul, but into the Mall of America, and it serves the neighborhoods in between, in Minneapolis, in St. Paul, rather, and in the South Loop there in, in Bloomington as well. It connects destinations, those destinations, major employers in downtown St. Paul, the airport is a major employer and a major destination for travelers, and the Mall of America, of course, is a major destination for shoppers and for employment. The locally preferred alternative was chosen by our Policy Advisory Committee in 2017. And the Policy Advisory Committee, I should mention, is a group of local elected officials in Ramsey County, Hennepin County, City of St. Paul, Bloomington, Mayor Bussey, you're, you're a member of that. Commissioner-level persons from Minnesota Department of Transportation, the Metropolitan Airports Commission, Metro Transit, Met Council, and a number of, of citizen and business representatives as well. The map you see in front of you is the modern street car, street car alternative that was identified as the locally preferred alternative in 2017. It would connect, at that time, it was planned to run from downtown St. Paul to the, to the mall, and connect with the Green Line in downtown St. Paul at Central Station, and share tracks with Green Line to the end of, end of line at the, at Union Depot. It would have run on 5th and 6th Street, down west 7th Street, which is also Minnesota Highway 5, cross the river on the, on the Highway 5 Bridge over, over the Mississippi River, a new station at historic Fort Snelling, turn kind of northwest, connect with the Blue Line at the Fort Snelling Station, and then interline with Blue Line, or connect again with, with Blue Line and run on the same tracks and serve the stations on Blue Line all the way through both terminals at the airport and into Bloomington, ending at the existing transit center in the Mall of America. That was seven years ago. Where are we now? We've been working on this with continued guidance from our Policy Advisory Committee, and a lot of work with technical teams, including a number of different consultant teams on this as well. Currently, we're in what we self-described really as a pre-environmental phase. We've been, been working on that since 2020, when we started this phase. So it's four years of work, going from essentially lines on a map from 2017 to refining the alignment and identifying exactly where stations best fit on West 7th Street in the corridor. How do we connect with Blue Line? Can we connect with, with Green Line downtown? What do the lane, what do the travel lanes look like? Will the streetcar be in dedicated space, or will it be in shared-use space? So a lot of that kind of refinement and preliminary engineering's been happening over the years. A great deal of public engagement as well. We're in that phase right now, the little "we are here" square points directly to public engagement and service planning. So we've, we've been engaging the public for a number of weeks now on the project, collecting their feedback, sharing information, understanding what's important to them, what they're concerned about, and what they're excited about. And we also evaluated a bus alternative. That was the direction from the Policy Advisory Committee seven years ago, to also look at a, a bus alternative. So we have that as well. So taking a look at the streetcar and arterial BRT alignments, arterial bus rapid transit alignments in Riverview. Here's the route that we have refined now to seven years later. Still largely the same route. The only differences are on both ends, really. The streetcar alignment connecting in downtown St. Paul would, would still terminate at Union Depot, but instead of the front of Union Depot on 4th Street, it would be kind of underneath Union Depot on Kellogg. So we would run instead of connecting with Green Line directly at Central Station, we'd run on Kellogg. We'd have a station at Union Depot, and another at Minnesota Street, just a block or two away from the existing Green Line stations in downtown. It would still run on West 7th Street, still cross the river in the same location, and still have a new station at historic Fort Snelling, connect with Blue Line at Fort Snelling, run on the Blue Line tracks all the way through into, into the Mall of America. However, we have a new station, we proposed to have a new station at the Mall of America that would be parallel to 82nd Street, elevated over 24th Avenue, and connect to the mall at the second-level parking deck. That has a number of advantages that I'll, I'll share with you in, in just a bit. But looking closely, looking more closely at what happens in the, in the Bloomington side, Hennepin County side of the, of the project. This is the streetcar project that would come, as you can see, just barely on the, on the right side of that graphic, is the Highway 5 Bridge over the Mississippi River. The project would cross there. It would travel between the Fort Snelling Memorial Chapel and Highway 6255, and then proceed kind of north, northwesterly. We would remove the existing highway ramp from Highway 6255 that connects to Highway 5 going westbound toward the airport. We could landscape that area, better connect the chapel back to the fort, rest of the fort facilities, and the new visitor center that's identified there, and those, those old barracks buildings, and, and make that work. The daily volume on that ramp is about 3,000 vehicles per day, so it's not a high-volume ramp. However, the loss of that movement would have to be mitigated, meaning we'd have to allow for it somewhere else, some other, provide for it some other way. allow for it somewhere else, some other, provide for it some other way. Looking at the end-of-line station here at Mall of America, in the top-right corner of the image is the Blue Line. We would pose that the streetcar travel down Blue Line, but instead of following the existing route all the way into the transit center, we would turn in parallel 82nd Street there, and the orange-yellow images you see there, the layout there, that would be on structure. So, we would elevate, we'd gradually climb up to the second-level parking deck at Mall of America, have a station there above 24th Avenue at 82nd Street for both Blue Line and for the Riverview Streetcar. So, one side would be, one side of that platform there, the bright yellow over 24th Avenue would be for Blue Line, the other side would be for Riverview. Some of the benefits of doing that, it shortens travel time for Blue Line riders by about two minutes. You're not traveling around the adjoining lands and going into the station, entering it from the south. It also removes the track east and south of the adjoining lands next to the Mall of America, making that more available for development. Also, I should note on the graphic up here, just, I'm not sure which street that is, but just to the left of the 82nd Street, identifying marker there, there would be a kind of a driveway or essentially a tunnel underneath the structure there that would provide for the new station. So, there would be at least one minor access to the north for the adjoining lands, but otherwise, the existing tracks on the east and south side would be removed. It would also remove the crossing gates for Blue Line at Kilabrew and 24th Avenue. With trains, a frequency of trains in the peak hour, every 10 minutes, the gates go up and down every five minutes with a train in each direction every five minutes. So, we would be able to remove that and make traffic flow a little bit better. And we can add some flexibility in staging trains and events in both of these locations as well. The total cost or estimated cost, including inflation, for the construction of the new station at the Mall of America in 2033 dollars is $285 million. And here's just a couple of different graphics, just kind of bird's-eye view, looking kind of northwest toward 24th Avenue. If you were floating above the adjoining lands and looking down on the new station there, the new platform at Mall of America, this is what it might look like. This is just a concept, and there is the single streetcar there located on the graphic. And here's another look, if you're at street level, looking kind of in the same direction toward the northwest of what it might look like above 24th Avenue. And one more view, looking southwest from essentially 82nd Avenue, looking toward the platform and station, and there would be a three-car Blue Line train there parked at the platform. Bridge visualizations are next. I have some graphics to share with you. It's a very big project to replace the Highway 5 Bridge. Here's an aerial view of the bridge itself over the river. There you see on the kind of the upper portion of the graphic, that's the interchange with Shepherd Road and Mississippi River Boulevard. The bridge crosses the river and goes into the tunnel, the area of remembrance beneath Fort Snelling. Here's a couple of kind of artists' renderings or visualizations of what the bridge might look like, reconstructed bridge. It would be a double-decker bridge. There would be auto traffic and transit on the lower level, and the upper level would be almost a plaza, just as wide as the five lanes on the bridge. It would be a plaza for bicyclists and pedestrians, connecting to the bluff top. The lower image there shows what that might look like, connecting to the bluff top at Fort Snelling. On the other side, it would connect to the bridge that goes over Highway 5, adjacent to the, parallel to the, to Shepherd Road and to Mississippi River Boulevard. There's also a bike trail on both sides of that bridge, Sam Morgan Trail and the Mississippi River Boulevard Bridge. So, we'd be connecting additional trails and removing that ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, that it's non, it's a non-compliant bridge. There's a, if you're familiar with the bridge there, is the bridge, pedestrians with disabilities, certainly wheelchairs cannot cross the bridge, cannot use that. It's even difficult for people, bicyclists and others who are quite healthy and using the bridge itself, you have to drag your bike up and down the stairs. The plaza area on top of the bridge would also provide for community and cultural programming. It's right above the confluence of the Minnesota and Mississippi River, where the two rivers come together. It's an important area to tribal governments, to the Dakota Indians, who see this as the birthplace of their people, and it allows for, they're excited and interested in doing community programming above the river like that, as is the National Park Service. The bridge itself is a very expensive item, approximate cost, again, at 2033 dollars to replace the bridge is $415 million. And here are just a few more graphic images of looking at the bike and pedestrian deck facing west, looking toward Fort Snelling, how wide it might be, and this is just a rendition of what it could be, but it would be that wide. And here, looking underneath, auto traffic of parallel or adjacent to streetcar traffic using the bridge underneath. We also, as I mentioned, we also looked at an arterial bus rapid transit route as well. So, here's the alignment and stations that we came up with through our process. It would essentially follow the Route 54 bus that serves this area right now, following Fifth and Sixth Street downtown, ending at Union Depot, heading there, laying over, running down West Seventh Street, crossing the river at same bridge, and serving Terminal 1 at MSP Airport, and then going into Bloomington, the South Loop stations, and then ending at the Mall of America. There are 21 stations in this, in this version of the arterial BRT option. And here are just some more graphics, just showing you in a little bit more detail where the arterial bus route would go. Again, crossing the Highway 5 Bridge over the river, going under the area of remembrance, staying on Highway 5, serving Airport Terminal 1 on Glumac Drive, going in, looping around, and then coming right back out again, staying on Highway 5, and then getting into the South Loop area, coming down 34th Avenue. There'd be a station at, on 34th Avenue, immediately adjacent to the American Boulevard Blue Line stations. So, those two, those two stations would be close together, allowing for transfers and better connections. The arterial BRT route would then follow American Boulevard and turn down 30th Avenue. There'd be a station there near the 30th Avenue, a Blue Line station as well, so make that good connection again. And then it would be on Lindell Lane, going through the traffic circle there. We'd have a, we proposed to have a station at 24th Avenue, mainly to serve the businesses and hotels and condos and other, outside the mall, right in that area, just gives them a station where they can access. And then the end-of-line station at the mall would simply go down 24th and go in and out of the existing transit station at the Mall of America. Looking at some more details, travel times and ridership. Travel time for the streetcar is anywhere from 43-ish minutes to over 45 minutes. The bus option and the existing Route 54 a little bit faster, largely because the streetcar state, the streetcar alternative has additional stations at Terminal 2, Fort Snelling, Blue Line Station, and Historic Fort Snelling. And those are, those are stops that take you off of Highway 5. They're a little bit lengthy for a bus route to serve, so the bus route does not, does not serve those locations. So, that's one reason why it's, the streetcar takes longer to go from end to end. This is, I should note, too, this is Union Depot all the way to the Mall of America. And then some kind of nuances, too. The streetcar was modeled so it would stop at every station, or required to stop at each, at each location, each station, whereas arterial BRT can skip stops. If there's no one there requesting a ride, if no one on the bus requests a stop, the bus can just kind of go on through and skip that stop. The estimated ridership for the streetcar is mid, low to mid 11,000 rides per day. For the arterial BRT, it's about 8,000 rides per day. And again, we need to update these ridership numbers once we get new numbers, new demographic data, and the results of an onboard survey from Metro Transit, or from Met Council, rather, we can, we can update this information. And reasons for the higher ridership on the streetcar, again, the additional stations, especially in the Bloomington area, and streetcar light rail transit, any rail transit just has a type of, a greater attraction for ridership than do buses, and that's built right into the model, and it's modeled that way in other parts of the country as well. Looking at costs, mentioned costs of some of the particular elements already, total cost for streetcar, and we do have two options, I should have mentioned previously, we have two options for streetcar. Option one would be dedicated essentially all the way on West Seventh Street from the River Bridge up to Grand Avenue, which is just short of downtown. The second streetcar option would be dedicated, running in the center of West Seventh Street, only as far as just past Randolph Avenue. And then it would run in shared use with traffic, the way streetcars really traditionally do. It's worth noting that, you know, this is, it's hard to compare a $2 billion project. I'll show you the ABRT cost later, but the $2 billion cost here in the streetcar project include a lot of other things that are, that are required for the streetcar project to go forward, but there are also benefits to others who may not use the streetcar. The project would fully reconstruct West Seventh Street and Kellogg Boulevard, which in St. Paul is really a series of bridges. There's very little, very little land underneath Kellogg Boulevard, it's really a series of bridges. So, in order to install the streetcar on top of Kellogg Boulevard, we need to reinforce those structures, and we would fully reconstruct West Seventh Street. As I mentioned, we would replace the Highway 5 Bridge. It's required, we are required to do that. It's a 63-year-old facility, and even though it was redecked recently, it would need to be rebuilt to accommodate the streetcar. And then the new Mall of America station, as I mentioned previously, is $285 million. So, there's a lot of, a lot of benefit there that's not just in installation of rails and construction of stations and purchasing of streetcar vehicles. Streetcar cost and funding, well, we would, we would fund this project just the way Green Line and Blue Line were funded, largely through Federal Transit Administration's Capital Investment Grant Program. We would look for about half of the money through this federal grant. Ramsey County and Hanupun County both have existing sales taxes. Ramsey County's is dedicated entirely to transit, so our funding would go into this as well. Hanupun County would contribute. And then Minnesota Department of Transportation would contribute funding to the reconstruction of Highway 5, since that is, since West Seventh Street is Highway 5 and it's a MinDOT facility. Arterial BRT capital and operating maintenance costs, as you remember from the previous slide, streetcar is a little over $2 billion. Capital costs for arterial BRT, we're estimating at about $121 million, and a few costs outside of the ABRT infrastructure of simply of stations and vehicles. They are, Metro Transit would be required to make pedestrian improvements and some roadway improvements at the 14 new station locations along West Seventh Street. So, that's something new that came out of the legislature in the last session. So, they would need to make some improvements at those locations where their, where their stops are. Cost and funding for ABRT, again, that's $121 million, 14 new stations. It includes the cost of new vehicles, it'd be new traffic signal and pedestrian upgrades that are planned as part of the project, and it would be funded through Metro Transit's existing funding sources. Metro Transit has developed a number of arterial bus rapid transit projects already in the region. They have a series more that are programmed and planned. So, Metro Transit would be the, would be the driving force between developing an ABRT project in the corridor, should we end up going that direction. Public engagement and next steps. As I mentioned, we are in the middle of our public engagement phase now, actually kind of wrapping up public engagement. We started in March. A number of pop-up events, just kind of showing up at different events that other folks are holding. I was in Bloomington Central Station Park for Sunday Fun Day not too long ago, and talked to a few folks there. We've got a number of open houses. One was at historic Fort Snelling at the Visitor Center, so we had an open house in the Hanupun County side of the project as well. A lot of outreach to area businesses. We had a meeting just today at Pat Mancini's Char House with area resident, business owners, rather, on West Seventh, talked to them about the project. And again, reaching out to a lot of people who typically show up at open houses or don't have the time to come to them as well. So, trying to talk to people where people are. Our engagement wraps up this summer, about mid-August, we're going to, going to wrap it up. And policymaker decision on the next steps, that's our Policy Advisory Committee meeting. We're planning on having a meeting on October 3 of this year, and that's when we'll share all the information that we've collected, not just in the last few months, but over the entire course of the project, all the public engagement that we've, we've heard, what's important to people, what concerns people, what excites people. We'll share that with our Policy Advisory Committee and look to them for a decision on how we proceed further. So, project timeline, if we end up, if the Policy Advisory Committee does end up pursuing a streetcar project and continuing to develop this, we would spend about two years in project development. That's a Federal Transit Administration-defined step. Two years in that, we would end up going through that phase and getting a rating, so we know where we would stand with project funding. The engineering phase, again, more refined design and development of the project for another three years, and then construction could happen from 2030 to 2033, and completion of the project, almost 10 years from now, nine years from now in 2033. And arterial BRT project can be accomplished sooner, although it is dependent on Metro Transit's schedule for new ABRT corridors, as I mentioned. They have a number of projects already programmed that they're kind of in the pipeline that they're developing. So, this project will get in line and be done at a later date. We're estimating 2030 as the opening year for an arterial BRT project. Pardon me, Mayor. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Roganbuck, for the information. Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The discrepancy in overall costs, it seems fairly significant. Is there, is there a, I guess, is there a process of assessment on that? And then, like, are the, are the funding sources also considered prior to making the decision? Because it looked like there are a number of, potentially like, I don't know, vague? I don't, you know, not determined, right? Not specifically determined funding sources for the streetcar project. Thanks.
Pardon me. Yes, the process of assessment in terms of cost, these are estimates that we have at this time. We've worked with Metro Transit, we've, our consultants have worked on other, other streetcar projects around the country, so we think we have a pretty good cost-per-mile estimate at this point. But if you've ever watched any of those old house renovation shows, you know, you never know exactly what you get into until you start, start digging and excavating and find out exactly what you need to do in terms of utility relocations or replacement and other kinds of things. So, we think our, we think our costs are pretty accurate, at least at this stage of the game. And again, there is a big difference in cost between the streetcar project and the arterial BRT, simply because the streetcar project includes so much more construction and replacement that's necessary to accommodate the rails. And in terms of funding sources, we have done some preliminary look at our, our rating as far as the Federal Transit Administration and the community, or the grant program goes. We think we would rate as a medium, which would qualify us for federal funding. However, we won't know that until we, until we complete the project development phase. But at this point, we, we feel pretty confident that we would still qualify, but we need to go through that step and verify that at the end.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm particularly interested in the security of a line. I know Met Transit has challenges right now in staffing the green and the blue line. So, when do we expect to know if Met Transit can actually support an additional line like this?
Yes, that's a good question. We've heard that question a number of times from, especially even from businesses today at our engagement at Mancini's Char House. We don't know for sure when Metro Transit will fully staff up. We know that they're short of transit police. We know that they are looking at or have implemented, I think, kind of transit ambassadors, who would kind of be more of social services-type people, who would help people find help if they need help, homeless people who might be living on a platform, they can, they can help them get to resources that they need to take care of themselves and move off the platform and out of the vehicles and things like that. I guess there's no, really no good answer. We know Metro Transit is working toward that end of improving security and safety aboard their system. We know it's a problem not just for rail transit, but also for buses and bus stops. But we, we look forward to continued effort by Metro Transit to improve that.
Thank you.
Other questions, Council? Councilmember Lohman.
So, Mayor, you serve on this?
I serve on the Policy Advisory Committee for this project, yes.
So, I'm just curious in terms of, you know, what you think of this and what opportunities this affords the city of Bloomington, from your perspective of sitting on there. I know that if I've got any comments, I can come to you with them, and I will later on. I don't want to take the time today to do that.
Absolutely. Well, when Kevin gave this presentation to the Port Authority, I did tell the port that you got the short version. There's, there's a presentation that's about three times this long, that really includes all of the information. And I, and I think one thing that is an important distinction, and Kevin did touch on it, those travel times that they listed there are end-to-end travel times. And it's always been the consideration, as long as I've been working on the And it's always been the consideration, as long as I've been working on the, on, on this potential line, especially from a, from a rail perspective, that it's not necessarily an end-to-end kind of thing, but it's a transit option for people along that, within that area. So there, there, there will be some folks who will go from downtown St. Paul to Mall of America or back and forth. But this is primarily and more importantly, I think, for people within the city of St. Paul who don't have a decent transit option to get within, within the city itself. And so that's where a lot of the, the ridership numbers come from. They're not, they're not end-to-end trips. They're two or three stop trips, basically. And so it's, it's an interesting thought and it's, it's an interesting, an interesting connection and, and could conceivably be seen as the same way here in Bloomington. Now, there's some, there's some overlap with the blue line and, and the stops that the, the, the streetcar would make within the city of Bloomington. But ultimately, I mean, the, where it's primarily within other areas, it's a stop-to-stop type of count. For Bloomington, it would be important because right now it's, it's almost impossible to get from downtown St. Paul to the airport or to Mall of America. And this would make that much more possible. And it would, frankly, it would kind of close that, that, that triangle between Green Line, Blue Line and now the, the Riverview Corridor. So there, there are pluses and minuses to everything and that's why we've been talking about this and why Kevin's been working on this most of his adult life and I have as well. And it's, and, and we have plenty of years to go, so. But it, it's an interesting thought and there, there, like I said, there are many pluses and minuses to it.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your, your perspective, especially since you've been working on this for so long.
Councilmember Rivas.
Mayor, I just have a question. I'm curious, what's the benefit of the rail as to the buses? I mean, 121 million to 2.12 billion.
Billion, yes.
So what's, what's, what's the benefit of having the rail over the buses?
There are, there are pluses and minuses to both. Kevin, I think, mentioned the biggest difference is that a fixed rail system will always draw more passengers. It's, it's more reliable. It's, there is just a different appeal and a different draw to being a rail-based system as opposed to the rubber wheel-based system of a bus. And that, that's not just shown here in the Twin Cities, but that's across the country. That, that's just kind of a, and it increases the ridership significantly. Now, for a bus rapid transit, obviously, if it doesn't work, you can move it or you can change the route or you can do something different because you're not, you don't have the tracks holding you to one route specifically. And so there's definitely the benefit to that. The trick with the B R T is that if it's in traffic, if it's on the street and if it's in traffic, it loses a lot of its effectiveness. If it's a dedicated bus tray, a bus lane or even a bus, you know, a separated bus lane, it makes a huge difference in terms of the travel and the ridership. Unfortunately, between Union Depot and, and the airport or Mall of America, that just is not going to happen.
Thank you.
Others? Well, Mr. Roganbuck, thank you so very much for spending time with us this evening and sticking with us late into the evening here. I will continue to, to act as the liaison back to our council and between the Riverview Corridor Group and looking forward to when we get together next in October and continuing this conversation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor and, and City Council and staff, too. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel. We will move on to our final agenda item of the evening, item 5.5, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. And I'll kick it off with a quick review of our listening session earlier this evening. We had one, two, three, four, four speakers this evening. Pat Gerbacher, am I, am I saying that correctly? Gerbacher? Gernbacher, exactly. Thank you very much. Had questions about the survey regarding the Community Health and Wellness Center and the wording and the structure of the, the survey in general. I know she's going to have the opportunity to sit down and speak with our, with our Park and Rec Director and some of the folks working on this and try and get some of those questions answered. But it was good to hear some of those questions and the perspective about how that, that survey was balanced and what the questions exactly were. We heard from Laura Calbone regarding the, the language of the ballot question that we talked about earlier this evening. Carol DeVries was opposed to the bike trail in the Nine Mile Creek Corridor and laid out some reasons why. We had a good conversation with her. And Sally Ness was there and was, had questions about the lighting at Dar Al Farouk. And, oh, and Mr. Brian Sebick, don't want to forget Brian, I think he's still here. Questions about earlier publication of the agenda packet and whether or not that would be possible to try and at least lay out a, a draft council agenda a couple, two, three weeks in advance to give the, the public a better idea of what we'd be talking about in the, in the future. And that was our, our listening session. I guess there was five folks. I mentioned four, but I think there were, there were five folks. And once again, a good conversation at our listening session. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I've got three quick ones. First of all, I thought I'd provide the council with a update on the CrowdStrike outage from last week, which is, is still complicating matters as was indicated tonight. One of our presenters didn't make it here because of the continuing issues the airlines are having. So here in Bloomington, we're continuing to review and mitigate issues related to that outage. Most of the issues were addressed Friday morning. The impact to city services included a brief downtime for dispatch. Provider of our public safety systems, which is Logis, doesn't use CrowdStrike. So the impact dispatch was limited to individual workstations. Dispatch was able to continue taking and handling calls during the brief downtime, relying on their emergency operations backup plan. And after our base systems were restored, were restored at about 1:30 in the morning, we had less than five police squads that did not reconnect properly. Fire services had issues receiving mobile information of vehicles, but they compensated by using their radios. Fire mobiles were down for about two hours. Most of our city operations for the large part included individual desktops and laptops and those were functional for the most part by about eight o'clock on Friday morning. And I just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge our IT staff because they worked through the night to make sure that our critical services were functioning and they did a really fantastic job. So really appreciate their expertise and their dedication. Next item is, again, some kudos is reported to the council, but I want to share with the public that our city communications team continues to outshine just about everybody else in the state of Minnesota. So we were, the city of Bloomington Communications Division was nominated for 10 awards, I'm sorry, for nine awards from the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators in this year's Northern Lights Awards Contest. We received four first-place honors, so the Northern Lights Awards. Those four first place came in the special event category for the Bloomington Tomorrow Together State of the City Address. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. The annual report category for the BTT Corporate Report. In the promotional video category for a video that we did to get people to our Public Works Open House last year, which was a lot of fun. And then the Agency Event Programmer Service Video Category, looking at sidewalk snow removal priorities. We then had three silver award or second place awards that we received in the Public Information Project Category, Newsletter and Magazine Category, the News Program Category, and then, oh, I'm sorry, four silvers. And then one in the Video Campaign or Series Category. And then we received one third place in the Community Interest Video Category for our Snowplow Heroes. The highlight, that sounds like a lot of highlights, but the real highlight was that Janine Hill, who is our Communications Administrator, was recognized by M A G C as the, with the Lifetime Achievement Award, which was really fantastic recognition. And it was, it was nice to see because it was a complete surprise to Janine. So they, they, they were able to keep that under wraps somehow. I'm not sure how they do it. But even to the point where Janine's family from Iowa came up and came into the room while she was up front and she didn't even notice they were there until she turned around and there they were to celebrate with her. So really grateful for Janine's tremendous work at the city here. She's got a fantastic team that she works with in her Communications Division. And I want to give some credit to the council, too, because I think you have always recognized and supported the importance of having effective, engaging and interesting communications with our constituents. I go back to like 2016 when the council looked at survey information we were getting from our community and saw that the Bloomington briefing was the primary source of information for most people about the city. And at that time, we were doing it every other month. And the council committed to going to a monthly publication and the briefing continues to do extremely well. It was recognized here with a silver award and our communications folks continue to make sure that people in the community have the information that they need to know what services and programs are available. So thank you for your support of them and congratulations to them. The last thing I want to talk about is just upcoming National Night Out, which is always the first Tuesday in August. You can, residents can register for National Night Out Parties. There's a link on our website. And then they can also contact our Community Outreach and Engagement Coordinator in the Police Department, Katie Zerl, at extension 8808. And the deadline for parties is July 26th. Now, if people want to have a party after that, that's fine, but the importance of getting in by the deadline is that there's a whole apparatus here at the city for making sure that we hit every one of the parties, whether it's a fire department or police department or other city staff. We get to every party in the city, which is typically somewhere in the neighborhood of like 325 or 350 parties, which is among the highest, if not the highest, in the state of Minnesota. So it's a big, it's a big undertaking to get all of those scheduled. So we just ask people to get in as soon as they can and get their party registered. That's all I have, Mayor and Counsel.
Counsel, any questions of the city manager on anything brought forward? Very good. Counsel, do you have anything this evening? Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember DeLisandro and Councilmember Nelson, I see you here on Go Up as well. Okay. Councilmember Lohman.
Mayor, I wanted to just drop back to 5.1. In the letter that came from the Sustainability Commission, there was a request at the very end of it. You may, may not have seen that. There's a lot of materials for tonight's meeting. But the commission had requested that the, the council direct staff and the Sustainability Commission to draft a sustainable building policy by the end of 2025. And I just wanted to bring that forward now to see if we wanted to reconfirm that we wanted to have that done. So I wanted to kind of bring that forward. And I think just in terms of clarifying sustainability's role around building, I think that would help, you know, as we kind of move forward. I don't know that, that, that every time we have a building that comes up, you know, what is that role that, that sustainability has with that? Maybe it, you know, more properly rests with planning after a, you know, a document is drafted and some direction around that can be, can be had. But wanted to just point that to you, Mayor, and see what you want to do with that.
Well, I think it's, it's worth the conversation and then what the parameters around that might be. I mean, with, we, we just heard the presentation about the Health and Wellness Center, certainly with sustainability as a goal. And as, with, within city buildings, I think that, that makes sense. Private buildings might be another story, how far we can influence them or if we can influence them if there's city money involved in it. And so there, there's a variety of different things. I think we'd have to put, we'd have to put some meat on the bones around it, I think, before, or as part of the conversation as to whether or not we really want to approach this, I think.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that's sort of what I think this begins, that process of having that, that, that direct dialogue. And, and I know right now staff is, you know, really, you know, understaffed. And so that's part of, in the request, you know, and that would be, that's the reason why it kind of came here is, you know, looking to have a consultant. And again, the timeframe around that is in 2025. So we're kind of getting ahead of it. I know we, we know, we've talked about it, but I think the, I think really what the, the commission is looking for is kind of a affirmation that, that dialogue, both public and private, I do understand that. And I think it's important to kind of make those distinctions between those, you know, what types of influences, you know, happen around that. And I just do think it makes, and I've heard a number of council members bring it forward about having that conversation. I just, this is a good way to kind of put a nice stake in the ground.
And I think so, too. And I, I would agree with it. I mean, I can only speak for myself. I think it makes sense to do. I think it's, at the same time, I think boards and commissions put out their work plan without consulting with us all the time. So I mean, if they want to put this on their 2025 work plan, dig in, go to it and we'll get the work done. Related to this, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I would just be curious, we just approved strategic use funding for a plan related to sustainability for the city? Yes, would that, would this be something that might come up in that plan?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, not, not necessarily. So as Councilmember Lohman indicated, I did meet with Emma Strauss, Sustainability Coordinator, a month and a half ago, two months ago, to talk specifically about work plan because of the, the priorities that they have right now. And that was on the heels of a council discussion about whether we, we should or wanted to have the building standards, right? So I know that, that Emma is real concerned just about the capacity to take on a large project like that. And it wouldn't necessarily come out of that other project that they're working on. So this would be one where we would want to have a significant amount of engagement with both the business community and the larger community. You know, issues like, do we want to just start with our own building and, and capital asset program or are we going to start there and then expand to all properties? You know, those are some big policy issues. So it, it certainly is a place that you could look to, to fund that kind of a study. And I think based on our current capacity, we'd probably want to take a look and see what's available in terms of consultant services that might help lead that process. Because currently, having staff do it would, would really tax us based on the work plan that's in place right now. And, and same for the Sustainability Commission members, who I think are also feeling the strain of the work plan.
Clear on that? Everybody good?
So I guess I would be looking for something from this body to kind of affirm that. I think that's what the, I think that's what the commission's looking for, some type of affirmation or nodding of heads or that's. And maybe it doesn't happen, happen today, maybe it can happen next meeting on the 5th. Come back or...
Let's, I mean, I hate to nod because I'm not exactly sure I'm nodding, what I'm nodding about at the moment. So maybe we, we talk about this a bit more and have a, another conversation on the 5th. How about that?
That sounds good. And if we could maybe have a conversation before then, I think it'd be a good idea so we can have some more concrete and bring it back.
Sounds good. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, want to congratulate the folks at Bridging. This is their 37th anniversary week. They're big, a big fan of Bridging and the work that they do. They are having an open house on July 24th. That's Wednesday from 4 to 6 at the Bloomington location. And it's an opportunity for people to learn about their programming and how people can donate stuff, like what kinds of things they need, all that kind of stuff, but also like ways that people can volunteer, that kind of thing. So just again, another Bloomington institution that flies under the radar all the time and just does great work for our community. So I wanted to acknowledge them on their 37th anniversary.
Well, well done. Thank you for calling them out because yes, they do not only good work, they, they do invaluable work. I mean, they do fantastic work in the community and beyond. Councilmember Rivas.
I have a question. And I don't know if it's the appropriate place to ask it, but I'll go ahead and ask it, right? Why don't we have elections on the year that the presidential elections take place?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Rivas, I think we'd have to go back in history several decades to get the answer about why they moved to that. Now, more recently, we did have a conversation about it in 2020 when the Community Budget Advisory Committee was meeting. That was the group that was put together as a result of the pandemic to assess city funding and financing and make recommendations to the city council. So the elections, the odd year elections were reviewed by that committee and a recommendation of the council that they consider moving municipal elections to even years. Because the impact to the city budget is, well, back then, before we had the R C V vote, was about $175,000 a year or so for off-year elections. And so the thinking from the Budget Advisory Committee was, you might want to think about it to say... you might want to think about it to save that. And after some deliberation, the council said, no, we're gonna, we're not going to include that in the recommendations moving forward. So there, there has been a recent conversation about it. But I would maybe leave it to others who know some of the longer history about the why of how that ever happened.
I mean, if I may add a bit to it. The only reason I ask is because the participation we had this last election, I, I heard, I'm not really certain of it. Is that it was one of the biggest ever, right? Maybe because everybody was up for election. But if we are one of the biggest participants in elections during the presidencials for the entire state, I mean, we could kind of piggyback on that and have some of the best turnout for the local elections as well. And I was just thinking, which I don't do very often.
Mr. Mayor, I, I thought that we were required, am I crazy? I thought that the way, same as Minneapolis and St. Paul and everything, that you're a charter city, you have to do it on the off-years.
No.
Are you, okay.
Now, and I would, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, also remind anybody who's watching that the school board also is on the off-year election, too. So the municipal elections and the school board elections coincide. One comment I have heard, right? I don't know the reason why they adopted it in the first place. But during the conversation back in 2020 and, and otherwise, I've heard some of our local elected officials say that being able to break through the, the news and awareness during the even-year cycles is much harder for candidates at a local level, right? When people are focused on presidential elections or US Senate elections, that, you know, trying to get your message out to community is a lot more difficult. So that's one of the reasons I've heard when we were talking about whether we should reconsider it or not.
Makes sense. Well, thank you.
Council, anything else? If not, we have completed our agenda and I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight. Motion by Councilmember Muah, I think the second by Councilmember Rivas to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thanks much, Council, for your discussion this evening. Thanks to our, our folks who stuck it out until the end and to our full house who was here earlier this evening. And to the staff for pulling this all together. Everybody have a great Tuesday. Thanks.